Planning and zoning meeting of March 13th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, fire evacuation. In case of a fire, there's two ways to exit the chambers. One by the back doors, right behind you. And then my left, your right. Go through those doors to the exit and walk a safe distance from the building. Ms. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, Terrence Lynch.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Alinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Walter Crizell.
Here.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th, the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, admissions, comments?
They'll be upstanding.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And one abstention, two, I'm sorry, two abstentions.
I'm sorry. Well, I just want to make sure. I was writing things down, so who abstained? Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
And I will entertain a motion for approval of the February 26th special meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, comments? All in favor? All right. And two abstains, two abstentions. Okay, we did have a town attorney report. If you saw that in your packet. And. Okay, and we don't have any zoning enforcement officer report at this time, anything at the, at this time.
Not at this point. I'll try to get it to you for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. At this time in our meeting, we will, is the public participation. And we invite anyone who would like to speak to us about anything that is with planning and zoning, but is not on our agenda at this time. Anyone would like to come forward and speak, as long as it's not on our agenda. The last time, okay, seeing no one. Public participation is closed. We don't have any bond releases. PH 311, yeah, 3115ZA is tabled until March 26. And now we'll move to the new public hearing, PH 3113. Mr. Secretary.
Yep. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, March 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. PH number 3113, 31 South Street, application for special use permit to allow a fourth dwelling unit within an existing building. Christian Rivas Plata applicant, Enfield CNS LLC owner, MAP 24, Lot 125, TD 2 Zone.
Okay, is the applicant here? Please come, have a seat, and your name and address, and tell us what you're trying to do here, sir.
Name is Christian Rivas Plata. Address is 26 Enfield Drive in Windsor, Connecticut.
Okay, you've got the floor.
Is it?
Is the red button on?
Yeah, it's on, yeah.
All right, so tell us what's going on.
Well, I bought the property at 31 South Street over a year and a half ago, about a year and a half ago. And last January, it, I had a fire there. So I'm rebuilding the property. And one of the units that was severely damaged was never actually, they never got a CO. So I'm applying for that to go through the proper channels and get a fully approved for a, for a fourth dwelling.
Okay, staff.
Good evening, everybody. So this is for 31 South Street. The property is Zone TD 2, which provides a variety of residential housing options in walkable neighborhoods in downtown Thompsonville. 31 South Street is a three-family home and was constructed in 1900. Though the property card notes that as a four-family, the fourth unit was never fully built way back when. There was an original approval under PH 2471 for a fourth dwelling unit, but it was never constructed. So the approval was null and void. So the applicant is here tonight to request a new special permit. That way, his fourth unit can be a legal dwelling unit. There were no concerns from any of the departments. The applicant has requested a waiver of the site plan per Section 9.10.2.2C, since it's all interior and about uses. There is enough parking on the site to handle all the tenants. I went out with the building officials. A couple of weeks ago, we did an inspection. I saw the fourth unit. It is currently under renovations from the fire damage. And there are 11 conditions referenced in my report, crossing out the ones that pertain to site plans. Other than that, it's just the motion for a waiver, a motion for approval should the commission entertain it, and the 11 conditions. No other staff concerns were mentioned. Everything has been satisfied.
Okay, all right. Anyone, any commissioners have questions? Christian? John?
I'm good.
Joe?
I'm good.
Okay, well, I actually lived across the street from that building.
Oh, no kidding.
And it was always a four-family. So I was surprised when I saw this, so.
Yep, me too.
And I'm not going to tell you how long ago that was when I lived there.
Yeah, that's all right.
All right, so it's been there, so. Any, okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, do you want to see if anybody in the public would like to speak?
You're right, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay, anyone in the public would like to speak for or against public hearing 3113? Anyone? Seeing no one, no, okay.
Madam Chairman, make a move, motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Close public hearing.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Four.
Kenneth Alinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella.
Okay, any discussion on this? Now that we've closed public hearing? Seeing none. Ms. Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a waiver for the site plan per Section 9.10.2.2C.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Kenneth Alinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four. And I would like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3113, 31 South Street, application for a special use permit to allow a fourth dwelling unit within an existing building. Christian Rivas Plata applicant, Enfield CNS LLC owner, MAP 24, Lot 125, TD 2 Zone, with 11 conditions listed.
Oh, second.
Roll call, please.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Kenneth Alinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay, you're all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Secretary, when you're ready, for PH 3116.
Yes, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, March 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3116, 5 Redwood Street, application for a special use permit to convert single-family dwelling to a duplex. Emory Gudick applicant, Emory and Elfi Gudick owners, MAP 58, Lot 111, R 33 Zone.
Okay, is the applicant here? Please come forward, name and address.
Apologize for any mispronunciation.
Well, I am not Emory Gudick, I am not the applicant. I am his friend. And my name is Ahmed Gunay. My address is 107 Norman Road, Long Meadow.
I am here to talk on behalf of the owner.
So this house is built in 1960, and there is second floor built in 1991. The second floor just looks like exact same with the first floor. And obviously, they got their plumbing permit for approval, approval of installation for washer, kitchen, and sink and their related fixtures on the second floor. They have electrical permit approving installation for appliances, laundry, dryer, dishwasher, and more on the second floor. So building just looks like two-unit house on a single-family designation. And obviously, having one more unit would help for housing shortage. And owner is interested in turning this house into a two-family housing or duplex. That's pretty much it. We provided all the documentation that we have in, we believe that would help in this cause. And we would like to ask the board to, for a special use permit or to legalize this property as two-family house.
Okay, staff.
So this application stems from a zoning complaint that was filed by the tenant living on the second floor. And in checking into this matter, it was determined that the second floor was originally only approved by the zoning officer at the time. It was just approved as a, as an addition rather than a second dwelling unit. There were no final COs for the second floor dwelling unit. The zoning officer at the time never reviewed or was never shown any of the plumbing or electrical permits after the fact that went in after the initial application for the permit for the addition. We're kind of confused as to... The town has it as a single-family with an in-law apartment. The regulations or the situation doesn't satisfy that section of the regulations due to the size of the lot at 13, 1,300, I'm sorry, 1,313 square feet. So it doesn't satisfy this minimum of 17,000 square feet for the lot. The residents at the time it was built, or I should say, the property owner at the time it was built by William Merza, had the opportunity to go to the Planning and Zoning Board at that time under a special permit, but he never did so. So it does not, as it exists right now, it doesn't satisfy an accessory apartment application for an in-law, nor does it satisfy a duplex residence under the regulations, because there are no abutting properties that are duplexes, and there are none that are within the 500-foot radius of the home and property.
Okay. Anyone here, like, any questions? No, okay. I'm going to have to open it up to the public. Anyone here would like to speak for or against this application?
She gave you a list.
But that was his name. Okay, sir, I'm going to ask you to sit down, sit back, and please come forward.
Thank you.
I need your name and address, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jessica LaRoche.
You got to sit down and talk into the microphone.
My name is Jessica LaRoche, and I am the tenant.
And you need your address, you have to say.
Okay, 5 Redwood Street, Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you.
So I attended this so I could get a clear picture on what's being said, because it's conflicting from the owner, Emory. And if there was anything that I could add to this as far as the structure of the place, because I don't believe it to be accommodating as a normal rental should be. Like, for instance, the front hallway, and there is plumbing issues, because it's all tied into one incidents that I have reported to the landlord that I was experiencing in there. And now I'm understanding why, because it's all just one unit technically. So I don't know if that matters at all, what I had to say.
You're, you're, you're living there. You've got to tell us you've got a plumbing issue going on. And has that been addressed?
Um, it has. And the back way is blocked off from me. I wasn't able to provide that pictures that I have, because I have an ongoing case with the landlord as we speak, because of the living situations, so.
Okay, and when you say the back way is blocked?
Yeah, the second egress, he has forbidden me to use the back stairs and has it blocked. I have a picture on my phone, but I don't have.
Help us out when you mean blocked.
He has it screened off, and I'm not allowed to use it. I've been told that verbally and by him blocking it on me.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, so you live on the upstairs?
Yes, I do. And the gentleman that just was speaking is the one that represented that apartment to rent it to me?
Okay, okay. So, so is there, did I read somewhere there's a deck? And that's what the entrance is? There's a, there's a deck out back?
So there's a deck.
There's a back door that has stairs that goes down?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but you're not allowed to use that?
No.
Okay, so you only have one entrance to the upstairs? Okay.
And that entrance is extremely narrow. So I've actually looked into, this is what started me even asking if this was a legal rental, because of the landing. There isn't a landing on the top, and I've almost fallen a few times, because it's so narrow, and there's nowhere to stand. And my feet barely, I don't have big feet either. They barely, like, support myself on the stairs. If I have bags in my arms or something, to unlock my door and get in is, like, impossible.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Is the first floor occupied?
Yes, and it's much bigger than what I have. Set up completely different.
Do they have a, a second means of egress?
They have three ways.
And you have one?
Mm-hmm.
And it's a stairwell on the exterior of the building? How do you get, how do you get, is it interior?
I enter through the front, which their downstairs door is right there, so they just keep it shut. And then I go up the stairs, because it was an in-law. The gentleman that built it, his mom lived up there. He built it for her, so you could just easily access. And that was the law with the landing that I read, that because it's an in-law, you don't need the landing, because the door stays open.
So you walk through the front door, you pass by the entrance to the lower level?
Mm-hmm, go up the stairs. And then I just come to a door.
Okay. And then that's your only way in and out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a problem? I, you wouldn't know, never mind. Okay, anybody else? Go ahead.
Rick, is there separate utilities, two meters?
Oh, yeah, and I wanted to.
Is it two, is it split up?
I'm not sure if it's, I'm not sure if it's split up.
It's one meter, that's there. And I also have just one mailbox, too. What does that matter?
So I was just wondering if it's, like, was addressed to do the two van?
No, they did. There was an electric, electrical permit back after the addition was put on to go from a 100 amp to a 200 amp service.
Still a single meter?
Still a single meter, correct. The other thing I'd like to add is it was never, there was never a final inspection. And the building inspector, the present building inspector, mentioned, as you can see in the staff report, that it's, you'd have to inspect, or he'd have to inspect for the separation between the two units, because it was never a final. It was never put into the, into the building permit as two units. So it was never inspected as such.
So you say separation, you mean fire separation?
Fire separation between the two dwelling units.
Thank you.
I just have a question for you, Rick. These back stairs, is there a problem with them structurally that they can't be used? I don't know. I mean, I'm thinking Ray went out there and looked.
Ray did not go out. Mike Warner from the building inspector's office did. I went out with him at the time. Structurally, it doesn't appear to be anything wrong with them. It's just that they're blocked off, and they're not allowed to use it as an egress to get out if they had to. There's only one way down, the stairway. And as you can see on the, in the staff report, I put in three pictures. The second one, second one shows the front door, and it shows the two doorbells for the two different dwelling units. That's where the, really, the only entrance they can use to get upstairs. The back entrance is blocked off, the stairway going down.
Okay, all right.
And this matter was taken up back in 2023, because the owner at the time had contacted our office. He wanted to make a third dwelling unit there. And he had conversations, emailed conversations back and forth with Matt Davis at the time. And the same situation came up, where it was never approved as a, even a two-unit dwelling. And he was instructed to get some legal service to straighten out the matter before he moved on, trying to get a third apartment there.
Okay, all right. Yes, go ahead.
Rick, just, because I want to make sure I'm clear. This wouldn't even be considered legal for an in-law apartment. Is that what you said earlier?
Right, and when, when, you couldn't use it as an in-law apartment. First, yeah, first of all, he doesn't reside there, which is one of the requirements. The size of the unit is larger than is allowed, the actual dwelling unit.
Okay.
And the lot, the property itself is less than 17,000 feet, square feet. It's 13 and plus square feet in size.
I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Joe, Christian? Okay. All right. Take a seat.
Thank you.
Sir, do you want to come back and address some of these comments?
So, as I said, I am not the owner. I am here to talk on behalf of the owner. But only thing that I would like to say against is the second egress. There is second egress. And the tenant, the lady before here, was allowed to use a second egress. But the owner asked her to prefer to use the front, because the back entrance was being used by the downstairs. But there is a nice deck in there. You can go out and see it. You can, there are stairs going up there, and there are stairs going, same stairs going down from second floor to ground. And they also have front access. So there are two egress, and nothing is blocked off. And owner, I was there. I was there when owner said to the tenant that you should use the front, avoid using the back if there is an emergency. Of, of course, it is, it is an egress there, because the downstairs person was using the back entry. So they have more privacy. They wouldn't see each other. That was the instruction the owner gave.
I'm sorry, that doesn't even make sense to me. She lives there, she pays rent. She's entitled to use both front and back.
Totally understand.
And not to say, you can't use the back, because the people downstairs want to use their back. Well, they could use the front, too.
Sure, totally understand.
They should be told the exact same thing. Use just the front. So that, that, I'm sorry, that doesn't.
No, no, no. I'm not telling this to change your mind. I am telling you that there is a second egress, and nobody can say you cannot use this. It is just like, try to prefer first, like, front entry, because back entry will be used by the downstairs, so that you will have better privacy. But there is always second egress in there, and it is functional.
Now, is this tenant allowed to use the garage that's there?
I don't know. I don't know if, what is their agreement with the owner?
And, I mean, if you're pulling into a driveway, and it's easier to go up your back stairs, because you're carrying groceries.
Sure, yeah. That was totally allowed.
So, and, okay. So I, I guess I would need to hear from the owner. I, I'm, I'm having some confusion on this.
I can tell you that on the 30th, when I went there, the stairway was blocked off.
I have a picture, it's still blocked.
So I'm not sure how it is right now, but it was blocked off when we did the inspection on that date.
Okay, so it is blocked.
It is blocked, I have it.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you can't talk from the audience.
So just so you know, it was like a gate, it was gated across and blocked off with the gate, so that you didn't have access either to go down and get down to the driveway or enter into the stairway to come up the stairs.
Okay. All right. I'm, go ahead, Frank.
Rick, I have a question for you. Rick, when you say blocked, with a gate, a swing gate? A gate that opens, a mechanical gate? So I ask one question, is it a legal means of egress? Second, this back porch? I'm confused.
So if you went out on the deck, if you tried going down the stairs, you'd have to jump over the gate that was there, because it was blocking the rest of the stairway, so you couldn't get down to the first floor or the...
So it's a permanent gate?
As far as I could tell at the time. I didn't try swinging it. I mean, I wasn't there for that. I was there just for the inspection of the second dwelling unit upstairs. We went out onto the, onto the back deck just to see what the condition of it was. And looking down, you could see where the, it was gated off. And there's no way I could jump over it at the time. And, I, I mean, I didn't test it, physically test it to see if I could open it up, but it was, it was blocked off with the gate.
So we don't, the answer is we, we don't know if it's a legal second means of egress. We don't know that.
No.
That's the big question for me.
I'll sit, Frank.
Yeah.
Vinnie?
Thank you. First of all, Frank, to answer that, we do know it's not allowed. He shouldn't even have that there, period. So we shouldn't even worry about the back. It shouldn't be there at all. How long have you been, sir? How long have you been renting this as a two apartment?
Less than a year. And owner learned about this issue in December of 2024.
Yeah.
And then started this special permit application. And also notified the tenant that town doesn't recognize this property as two-family, so we have to terminate our agreement.
So before checking with the town, you've started renting it as a two-family?
That's, that's right. Owner thought, because there are some documentation, like GIS, I can't tell what they, I provide, they, those are provided in the application, like property card, GIS record, So owner thought this is two-family, because everything was designed like two-family house. There are like functioning kitchen, laundry, second floor and first floor. So owner thought it was two-family and rented out that way. But then he learned from the town that it is not two-family, and then he started this process of applying for special permit.
So when you bought the house, on your paperwork said it was a two-family house?
Yeah, there was, there was a statement like that. There was.
On the deed, it said it's a two. See, I'm just trying to, because I'm, you know, against everything that's so wrong about this, I'm trying to find, it's hard to believe, first of all, the owner's not here, but you didn't know that it wasn't a two-family. It just, all of a sudden, you just said, oh, maybe this isn't a two-family, I should go to the building department?
Very good question, because that was a confusing part for, for the owner and for us.
Oh, it's confusing.
Part was this, even in the, in the purchase time, it was, show me, it's designed like a two-family. It was, it was in, designed like a two-family house, even in the listing when, when he purchased, the owner purchased. And he was thinking, he was asking me, like, should I, can I rent this out? We thought, people are renting out even their rooms in their houses as Airbnb or short-term rental, so this should be okay. That's, that was the initial thought. But as soon as we learned that it is not doable, it is not right, then he started this process of asking for a special permit.
Rick, quick question. Is, because this is not even close to being legal here, there's, did you shut it down, the second floor, or?
No, I don't have the ability to do that.
You don't have?
No, the building department could technically. And if, if it's approved, if this were to be approved, then the building department would then issue a violation notice because it's never been inspected for the second dwelling unit. That's in our, in your packet there.
Yeah.
Was, was mentioned by the Chief Building Inspector. The property was purchased in 2022 by the present owner, according to the car, the property card. And as I said earlier, he was aware of the situation in June and July of 2023 rather than just recently with the violation. So he knew there was a problem with it. And as a matter of fact, regarding the, how it was sold or marketed, I guess I should say, I actually did a search of the house, and it was listed, the listing said that it was an in-law apartment on the actual listing. I mean, that's how it was advertised, but it was never legally an in-law apartment.
Right, but it wasn't listed as a two-family?
No, not a two-family. And it's not, all it says on the property card is that its occupancy is two, but when you look down on the property card, it says that it's a single family with an in-law apartment. And we don't, a lot of times, the assessors, you go out and do a reevaluation, and they do it internally. We don't get a notification that something's been changed. I mean, it's, it's two different departments. We don't get, we don't get told that there's a change in the valuation, evaluation of the property, so.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm also, thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like there are several issues here. Can you tell me how the owner proposes to fix some of these issues? I mean, you're asking us to legalize something that looks like we can't legalize based on all of the issues with, with the property. And even, you know, even an in-law apartment wouldn't be allowed because of our regulations. So it seems like it's a, it's a very big stretch for us to give you a waiver to accept all of this, okay? Not only that, the health department says there's a risk of lead-based paint.
It was certified, it was checked on lead. Am I, am I, am I allowed to speak?
Oh, was it in the pack?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that part. So that's been checked already?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
That was in our packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
That was done, yes.
Okay, it just seems like a stretch. I'm not sure how the path is to get you approved and let you be able to use this, but it seems like it's a stretch to just issue a waiver tonight and say, yeah, go ahead, because it seems like there are a lot of issues with this, from what I can see. That's it.
John?
Yeah, just to clarify, when this, when this house was purchased by the owner, there was no due diligence, meaning the owner, the purchaser, their attorney, the bank, nobody, nobody did any investigation to do this? Because generally, this is, you know, real estate closing 101. This is usually flushed out prior to closing by the attorney or the bank because they want to, they want to see all the documentation, all the permits are in place, and if there's any zoning and so forth. But none of that ever came up at the closing?
Very good question. None of them came up at the closing. But what happened, the owner was purchasing this as a single family anyway. Owner was purchasing this as a single family, but they, when they see the design of the house, it looks like just two apartments on top of each other, but it's designated as single family. And then the whole thing started. So yes, at the beginning, nobody noticed anything or had any problem with anything at that time. It was advertised as single family with an in-law unit, not two-family maybe, but a single family as an in-law unit. And nobody said anything about that when, when the owner was purchasing it. But, I mean, our point here is not to really change your mind or convince you, but if, if this is not working out, then we will have to find out what should be done and go that route. Owner thinks that if, if town is not allowing to change this, get this special permit, then it will be, we have to get the tenant out, and it will be a single-family house. Will be used as a single-family house and go through the, whatever requirement that town requires in terms of like permits and whatever, that was lacking, that was missing from the buildup, from the initial building. That was the, that's the pathway the owner is going to pursue if there is no special permit granted.
All right. Yep, thank you.
Christian?
Yeah, I mean, going off what Commissioner Holinsky and Grillo mentioned, I mean, as far as like what we're talking about right here, I mean, it is pretty cut and dry in terms of, it would be, it would be quite the stretch for us to, to approve this in our current regulations. I mean, it, it does sound like there's potential building or safety concerns, considering it's never been approved for a second unit, whether that's in-law or a duplex. But that point, that's almost kind of a moot point for us because they can't even get, and staff, I think, can correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they won't even get to that point because it's not, it's not allowed under our regulations. So, I mean, you know, I, we probably, probably shouldn't drag this out too long, just to...
Okay.
I mean, I, I think it's tough, I don't think we can approve it under the current regulations. If the regulations were to change, if the applicant were to come to us with, with a regulation change in the future, I think that would be the route. There's, there's no way you could build around it. There's no, there's no construction you can do to the apartment, the unit right now to make it work in our current regulation. So our regulations would need to be changed. There's, there's, yeah, so that, that would, that would be your next course of action. But I don't think there's any way we could make this work today.
Okay. Frank?
Just a clarification for Rick. Did I hear you, did I hear you say if it did get approved, that would be a mechanism to make the building department bring this building into compliance? Is that what you said?
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is they would have to start from scratch with, basically with the inspections on that dwelling unit, because it's never, there's never been a final inspection. It was never inspected for a second dwelling unit. And even the finals on the plumbing and electrical were never finalized. So that's, that's an issue all in itself.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, was it ever issued a CO?
No.
No.
Right, so, yeah, no final inspection, no CO.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and so I'm going to ask you to have a seat. Going to have anybody in the public who would like to speak or against. Ma'am, you can come up if you'd like. Okay, all right. Staff, I'm looking to you, because this is a, that's something that we can even...
The problem is that it's not approvable under the existing regulations, whether it be a duplex or an in-law apartment. There's conditions and requirements that just can't be met under the existing regulations. And even in, the applicant referred back to the regulations back in 1991 when it was built. He can't even satisfy, couldn't even satisfy those at the time, the actual person.
Right, because you included that in our packet.
Right, so it wouldn't even satisfy those regulations because the maximum was 75% of the dwelling unit, and that came out to 780 square feet. And it's well over that, I think at 1,120 square feet. So even back then, it could have been approved through the Planning and Zoning Commission in 91 when it was built.
Okay. Yes, Walter?
So if we deny this, they would have to take all the plumbing and everything from the second floor, what, like bedrooms up there or something, or how would?
They wouldn't have to take the plumbing out. They can't use it as a second dwelling unit. You could have them remove the kitchen, and it would just be a single family.
Just cap everything and?
Yeah, well, they wouldn't have to cap it if they wanted to use it for additional living space for a single-family home. I mean, basically, it was a ranch, and it happens numerous times where someone wants to expand, their family expands, they put a second floor on a ranch, it becomes a colonial or a raised ranch. I mean, it happens all the time, but it's still a single-family home.
Single-family, they can't rent it, they can't?
Right, that's all.
Okay.
All right.
Close the public hearing?
So, Rick, does that mean that the second floor will have to be evacuated as an apartment but can be used for a two-story, single-family?
They can use it for habitable space for a single-family home.
Single-family home, two-story, single-family home.
Correct.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll take a roll call on that one, please.
Yeah, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alimo.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronal is four.
Okay, gentlemen.
Madam Chair, who seconded the motion to close?
Who seconds the motion?
I did. And someone else seconded? Did you second? So, Mr. Lynch, Commissioner Lynch.
All right, Terrence Lynch.
Okay. So here we are. It's not something we can approve. So, um, and there is a, hold on. There is a motion in our packet, and if we, as we always do, it's a motion in the affirmative. So if you feel that this is something you want to approve, you would say yes. If you don't want to approve it, you have to say no and give a reason why. And currently, it does not meet our requirements in our regulations, or it hasn't been inspected and built to the specifications of a second living unit. So, okay?
Can't we just make a motion to defeat it to begin with?
No. No. Motion to approve.
We have, we have to do that. So I just want to be clear with that.
I have a question. So just for clarification, so I understand what a motion is, so if we deny it, that means the tenant complainant is without a place to live?
She can contact Fair Rent Commission through Social Services.
Okay.
So, they can...
But it's evacuated as a department?
Um, well, we're not going to put her on the street tomorrow, but...
Just want to make that clear.
Right. But it is not a, a unit that can be rented, but if, you can contact Social Services and have her contact the Fair Rent Commission and move forward from there, okay? Yes.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to remind the commission, should you vote in, in the negative, that you must state your reasons.
Yes. Thanks, ma'am. Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a question to staff through the chair. There's, there's a motion here for, for approval of a waiver. What's the waiver?
Yeah.
That's just a typo. Just ignore it.
Okay.
It's part of our template, you can just...
All right. Okay.
All right.
Oh, wait, one more. Yes.
Yeah, just as far as discussion goes. I mean, I, I do think it's, it's pretty clear. I don't think we can approve it today. I mean, as far as like the actual use goes, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's crazy, but we, we can't just be giving out exceptions that go against our code.
Right.
So, you know, I think the thing for us going forward, you know, especially as we're doing our, our zoning reg rewrite is, you know, is, is this something that could be worth considering, you know, having, you know, an in-law apartment on the second floor or a duplex on the second floor? I mean, personally, I'm in favor of that. I think that's a reasonable expansion of use of a single-family home, but that's a matter for a different time, unfortunately.
Right, yes. I agree with you on that one.
Yeah, so, so it's unfortunate for the applicant, but, you know, they do have the legal right to, to propose to change the zoning regulations. And if they wait long enough, perhaps the zoning regulations will change in their favor, and then they could come back and then do all the building code stuff, but...
Okay. All right. Okay. The Secretary?
So with that, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve public hearing number three, 1165 Redwood Street, application for a special use permit to allow a second dwelling unit within a single-family existing dwelling. Emory Gudek, applicant, owner, map eight, lot 111, R33 zone.
Second?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes, I'll start, I'll start it off with my vote. And I'm going to vote against, and I'm going to cite that the application is, does not meet or nor is in conformance with sections 4.30.3 nor 4.50.10. Linda DeGray.
I'm also going to vote no, and for the same reasons, plus the fact that this unit has never been inspected to become a second dwelling.
Frank Alimo?
I'll be voting no as well for my reading non-compliance and public safety issue. Thank you.
Kenneth Holinsky?
I'll be voting no as well because of the, it does not meet our, our regulations.
Vincent Grillo?
I'm against. This application doesn't meet our current building requirements or regulations.
Joseph Muley?
Against for the same reasons, plus it's got other issues with building and no COs and things, and not allowed.
And Terrence Lynch?
I'm voting against because of most of the reasons that were stated, basically because it doesn't meet any of our regulations.
007.
Okay, sir, you're going to have to go back to your, to the owner, tell him that he's been denied and that he has some issues that he has to address if he wants to make this a second unit, okay? All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Secretary, when you're ready. PH 3117?
Yes, Madam Chair. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at the regular meeting on Thursday, March 13th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications. Public hearing number 3117, 799, 781, and 767 Enfield Street, and seven, or, excuse me, six and eight, Warner Avenue. Application for a special use permit for the site plan modifications to construct parking area for the expansion of outdoor display vehicles associated with Gary Rome Kia, GJWSJ LLC, applicant GJWSJ LLC, owners of 799 Enfield Street and eight Warner Avenue, and Triano Realty Corp., owners of 781, 767, and six Warner Ave., map 29, lots 56, 77, 53, 47, and 48, BG and R33 zones.
Name and address for the records, please.
I need to push the button. Oh. Gary Rome, and I live across the street.
You need an address, across the street.
809 Enfield Street.
Okay.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'm with Dana, and we're here to present our plan for, for cleaning up the neighborhood and making everything look, look nice, neat and clean, just like it does on our side over there. And happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Go, you're on, Dana.
Thank you. For the record, Dana Steele, professional engineer with JR Russo and Associates, and we prepared the site plans that were submitted with this application, and I'd like to go through them with you. The, the site is located at the corner of Park Avenue and Enfield Street on the, on the east side of, of the road. Gary Rome Kia is, the dealership is on the other side of Park Avenue, on the south side of Park Avenue. And in 2012, 799 Enfield Street, the, the property opposite of that was approved for a parking area for their, for their inventory or additional inventory. So, moving on to this plan here, so the property at the corner is 799, it's an L-shaped property here, and at, in 2012, it was, if I can turn off these, hide annotations. It was, this, this was approved with paved parking in the front and gravel parking in the rear. Arborvitae plantings along the boundaries that were abutting residential and, and curb cuts on Park Avenue and Enfield Street. The, this, this large lane here, which is actually painted onto the pavement, is the car carrier loading and unloading area. And so we, we determined at that time that a tractor trailer could pull in here, unload and, and exit the, the property using these two, two curb cuts and not having to load and unload out on the, the town streets. So Gary Rome Kia is looking for more space for, for vehicles. He's spoken to Triano Oil that owns the properties to the north, including 781 Enfield Street, which is this narrow strip here along Enfield Street, 767 Enfield Street, which is the Triano Oil property, as well as this, this property in the back, which fronts on Warner Avenue. So Warner Avenue is a residential street behind this development. The properties along Enfield Street are all in your business general zone, BG, which is, which car dealerships are allowed in your BG zone. The, the properties on Warner are in the residential R33 zone. Gary Rome has purchased eight Warner Ave., so eight Warner and 799 are both owned by the applicant. The other, the other three parcels, six Warner Ave., seven, the rear portion of 767 and all of 781 are going to be leased from Triano Oil to Gary Rome Kia. of 781 are going to be leased from Triano Oil to Gary Rome Kia. Frank Triano's here as well, if you have questions about that arrangement. The, it's about 30,000 square feet, almost three quarters of an acre that is being leased in addition to the properties that Gary Rome Kia owns. So this is what the existing site looks like. There is, there's a house at 781 that is not in great shape. It's, it's in need of work, and, and so the plan is to remove it. And that will, when Gary mentioned about cleaning it up, that's part of the process of cleaning up, removing this house. House is also non-conforming because it's in a business general zone. So it's eliminating a non-conformity by removing it. We're also eliminating a curb cut. There's a driveway right now, a lot of curb cuts on Route 5. And so one less curb cut's a good thing in terms of safety and traffic. So we're eliminating that curb cut, putting a curbing across the front here and eliminating the house and the driveway. Some of the landscaping in between will, these lots will be removed, but all the landscaping along the boundaries will remain. On Warner Ave., there's a row of Arborvitae in this southern corner, the southeast corner of 8 Warner has an Arborvitae row that will remain. And there is larger mature vegetation along the frontage of 6 Warner Ave. And there's a, there's a little bit of a gap in the mature vegetation here. I believe there's a gate there.
Yeah.
There's, there's a gate there, but the intention is not to use that gate. It's just going to be locked and, and it's overgrown. You can barely even see it. So it's, the intention is not to have any, any access whatsoever to Warner Avenue. The, the property at 6 Warner and 767 Enfield Street is bounded to the north by a town drainage easement, which collects water from this residential subdivision and connects it to the larger stormwater system in the state highway. And in conversations with the town engineer, we determined that this system really doesn't want to receive our water, and so we have devised a stormwater system that avoids that. So here's what's being proposed. We're, we're adding additional paved parking. That's this darker shaded area in the front, basically continuing the pavement that's at 799, just continuing it to the north, maintaining the same rear limit, eastern limit of that pavement. We're also then expanding the gravel parking, which is currently in the back portion of 799, and onto 7, the rear of 781, onto 8 Warner, and then blending in with the existing pavement. And this back portion of 6 Warner is pavement millings, but it's still an asphalt material. So this is all asphalt pavement over here, and the intention is basically to leave this as is and blend into it. This 6 Warner Ave. has been historically used for parking of vehicles. One time even, the town was using it as an impound yard for vehicles. So this, this use has traditionally, historically seen vehicles parked here. And so the intention is to, is to leave these things as, as they are. So that's what's being proposed. I just, I guess I'll just continue on down. Here's the grading plan, which shows the stormwater system. We're putting in extensive stormwater system. Your town engineer, assistant town engineer, John Kabibo, did offer some comments today, which I had suggested to staff could be conditions of approval. And in the draft proposed conditions, special, site-specific conditions that Lori handed out, those three are listed and included, so I can, I can go over those in more detail if you'd like. This, this plan here is the site access plan for emergency vehicles. The, the existing curb cuts are not changing. The tractor trailers can still load and unload. What I wanted to look at is can a fire truck, Thompsonville Fire Department serves this area, can a fire truck come, come in and maneuver all the way through our site? We don't want to put so many cars in there that they can't, can't maneuver around and be able to get to the, the back portions of this site. So that's what this plan demonstrates, that there's enough room, the aisles are big enough to be able to allow that fire truck to move in and out. And I did get a response today from Kevin Parrots, the fire marshal, indicating they had no comments.
We had a meeting with them.
Yes, we met back in November with all the staff for an ART, including the fire marshal. And we, so we, this isn't something that they've just seen recently, but we've been working with them towards this, this application, and so we're, we're happy to finally be here to, to present this to you.
We met with the health department as well.
Yes, we met with the health department, but there's no health-related issues here. There's no building being, being proposed, so. But yeah, that's true. This is the lighting plan, and we are proposing to improve lighting on, on these sites, to provide adequate lighting for this, this use. There are currently these tall, 25-foot-high light poles along Route 5 and Park Avenue and along the, the property line currently between 781 and 799. And so the, the light poles that are along the north boundary line, those are in the way of, of the, of the parking layout. So they're going to be relocated, and we're adding a third one here to, to this area. These are going to stay along the, the street frontage, and there's also shorter poles along the residential property. So around this, this corner here, there are poles that are only 12 feet high. All the poles are, all the light fixtures are full cutoff fixtures, and, and the applicant is planning to put in new fixtures here. These are the technology now. I'm always surprised when I go buy these lights now and look at them, you can't even tell if they're on because they're so good at containing the light and avoiding, avoiding spill. That being said, the lighting plan, even, even with the 12-foot-high poles along the property line here, the plan does show some light levels over the property line into the residential properties. Now, that doesn't take into consideration the Arborvitae trees that are blocking that, that light. There's really no way for our lighting manufacturer to account for trees. So that's a mitigating factor. In, in the recommended conditions, condition number six, staff suggested final lighting plan should show zero lighting onto adjacent properties. And I was pointing out that our lighting plan doesn't show zero at the, at the property lines, but it's, it's the same as what's there now. So we're not proposing to make it any worse. In fact, the lighting that we're putting along Warner Ave. is zero, but these existing ones here are, are not zero. And so our hope that those can remain, without increasing them, can remain as they are.
What do they call it, dark sky compliant?
The full cutoff fixtures are dark sky compliant, which doesn't provide light upward. Everything is pointed down. And so I understand through staff that you're, you've interpreted your, your regulations in the past to mean, the regulations say that, that you shouldn't have any light directed at other properties. And so I interpreted that to mean that you just have to point them away, not that there would actually be zero at the property line, but according to staff, that's how you've, it's been interpreted in the past. So we, we're willing to submit to a condition, if that's what you, you want, and do our best to try to meet that. If we can't meet it because of the limitations in the space, we are putting on house shields as well onto these lights, or there's already house shields on those existing ones, and we'll, we'll be having house shields on, on the new ones as well. We'll do our best to fully comply with that. If, if we can't, I guess, to direct us what to do, you want us to come back to you and have another discussion, or can we agree that we just won't increase the lighting at these? So that's a matter for discussion. You tell us what you'd like. We're, we, we want to cooperate and do whatever it is you feel is, is necessary to protect the residents nearby, because we recognize that we are abutting residential properties, and we don't want to be a nuisance to them. The good thing is, this use has been operating here for 13 years now, so 12, 13 years. And so it's got a pretty good track record, I hope. We'll maybe be hearing from some of the residents in this public hearing, but we want to try to be good, good neighbors in this, and so we'll, we'll do what we can to, to comply with, with your requirements. So that's the, the lighting plan. I would just, I guess, go through a couple of other things. I submitted a, a letter with this application where I talked about some of the aspects of, of the site that I want to review. I think I mentioned briefly, this layout here, I'm curious, the total number of parking spaces shown is 259. So 259 spaces. There's also, we're indicating this aisle, this outer aisle here, is going to be reserved for overflow parking. So if things get really tight and they need to double park in, in the aisle here, we're asking for permission to do that as well on a, on a occasional basis as needed. Whilst the main aisle here that's connected to this curb cut would always remain open, and we've demonstrated that's what the fire department needs for, for access, and that they were, they were good with that. So, so that's the number of parking spaces. Five parcels are mentioned. 799 is already in compliance. It was, as I said, approved in 2012. 781, non-conforming use is going to be eliminated. Also setbacks, non-conforming setbacks are going to be eliminated by eliminating the structure. 767 is, is non-conforming with regard to setbacks, but that building's remaining, so. But there's going to be no increase in non-conformity at 767. And at 8 Warner Avenue, it is also non-conforming. This is the, this is the existing one here. I could probably zoom in so you could see it, see it a little bit better. So there's a house at, on the back portion of 8 Warner. It's actually too far back to the, so it doesn't conform to the, to the setbacks there. That's going to be removed, so there'll be improving that non-conformity. And then 6 Warner Avenue has a box, a container box that's going to be removed, which is not allowed by regulations. And these trailers that are encroaching over property lines will be removed. This shed will also be removed. So, so we're going to be cleaning it up. We're going to be making it more conforming, and so I think that's some of the positives of, of this application. As we mentioned, this, this use is automotive vehicle sales with a repair facility, which is a special use. And so since we're expanding that use, this is a special permit. It's why we have a public hearing this evening. And, and so the question is whether or not this use is compatible with the neighborhood. Is it, is it appropriate in, in this location? And I'll, I'll talk more about that. Before I do, though, I mentioned landscaping. The regulations require a 35-foot buffer from residential zones. We ran into this issue across the street when, when, when Gary Rome wanted to purchase the, the property across here and expand their, their parking here. Received that approval more recently, and you granted a, a reduction of that, which you, your regulations allow you to do. As we mentioned, section 1020.C allows the commission to modify the, the buffer requirements if you're satisfied that the residents will be adequately protected. So that's the key. Are you satisfied that they'll be protected? And so what, what we have done in the past is we've provided a denser screen of plantings. These Arborvitae's provide a continuous solid screen and a privacy fence, a solid vinyl fence. So the combination of fence and Arborvitae's provides for a buffer at this property over 809 Enfield Street, as well as.
6 Park Avenue.
And, and 6 Park Avenue that where we were expanded to. So, so this is something that is consistent with what you've been allowing in previous applications, this, this type, this type of a buffer. Of note, the, the buffer that you approved back in 2012 from these residential included the Arborvitae, but did not include a vinyl fence. So one of the, the comments about this, I think one of the conditions was suggesting vinyl fence everywhere, except obviously at Route 5 and Park Avenue along the frontages. But that's not what we're proposing. If that's what you require, then we will provide that. But we're, we're asking you to allow us to, to keep the, the buffer that is existing here on 6 Warner Ave. the same. There's a chain link fence and, and vegetation there. The vegetation here, I don't think is really high, but it's, but there is vegetation. This is a very tall, mature vegetation buffer, and so we'd like to, to leave that as, as well. And then we will be providing the, the vinyl fence and Arborvitae's along all of, of the residential frontage of 8 Warner Avenue, and then connecting into, to the buffer that's, that's existing at, at 799. So. So that, that's a determination that you can make, that, that the, and I think in, in approving this plan, you would essentially be approving, agreeing that the, that this was an appropriate buffer for, for the area. Mentioned lighting. I think we've, we've already talked about that, so I won't go into that in more detail. We talked about drainage and the site access sidewalks. Wanted to mention sidewalks briefly. This, this property has frontage on Warner Avenue. Now, there's already sidewalks on Park Avenue. There's already sidewalks on Enfield Street. So, but there's no sidewalks on Warner Ave. There are sidewalks to the, to the north, on both sides of Warner, and, but they end at the driveway abutting here at 4 Warner. So there's no sidewalks in front of this frontage. So your regulation, section 10, 10.10.7V, requires four-foot sidewalks for parking areas, and this is a parking area. However, this is a, a unique situation, and we ask you to, we're not asking you to waive it, because we know you don't have the authority to waive your regulations, but you do have the authority to interpret your regulations. And our feeling is that the purpose of sidewalks along the frontage of, of a parking area is to provide pedestrian access to the parking area. But in this case, there's a, there's a fence and plantings and no access whatsoever, no curb cuts, no pedestrian gates. So the sidewalk would literally serve no purpose and would, would access no one. So I recognize that you've been hesitant to, to not require sidewalks, and so we knew this wasn't a sure thing, that you would agree, but we're asking you to consider that sidewalks are not required in this case, that as you interpret your regulations and look at what the intent of having sidewalks were, that this really doesn't meet the intent of sidewalks here. But if you do determine that sidewalks are required, then we will agree to put, to put them in. One of the reasons we don't want to do that is because we've spoken to many of the neighbors around the area, and they don't want the sidewalk. So we want to be good neighbors to them and accommodate their concerns. Also, to do so would require removing all of this mature vegetation that is currently buffering the existing use at 6 Warner. So we'd have to remove all of these mature trees in order to make room for the sidewalk. So, and the neighbors, again, have said, we like the trees. We don't want to see the, that's the feedback we've gotten. I don't want to speak for anyone who might be speaking this evening, but, but that's the, some of the feedback that we've received is that the preference would be no sidewalks. And, and I realize it's not simply a matter of what people prefer. I get that. But I think that, that, that this is a unique situation that you could interpret differently and doesn't open up a precedent for you for many, many sites. Most sites have some, some access, if, if only, if, if not a driveway, at least pedestrian access. This will have none of that. So there's, there's no way for the, the employees who work here to go to Warner Avenue. There's no way for people on Warner Avenue to access the car dealership. It's going to be blocked off, and that's really for security reasons what Gary Rome prefers, and that's why they're proposing it that way. So that's all, that's all I'll say about the sidewalks. Lastly, regarding a special permit, again, mentioned, this is a special permit. You have to determine whether this is suitable in, in this location. Does this fit the neighborhood? And, and number one, our best, our best case for that is, well, it's been here for 12, 13 years and hopefully been. hopefully been working well and compatible with the neighborhood, and so we think that that can continue. Secondly, this is compatible because it's eliminating nonconformities. We're eliminating nonconforming structures, nonconforming uses, setbacks, and we're cleaning it up and making it better. I think that is good for the neighborhood. And so, and lastly, the front of this property is Zoned Business General, which means, if not this, what? It could be a commercial development, retail. It could be an office or something like that. Maybe not a lot of demand for that right now, but it could be something of a higher intensity in terms of traffic, in terms of the number of trips. I mean, these vehicles come in and wait till they're sold, and then they leave, and they come in on a car carrier, very little traffic in comparison to other uses. So I think, for a number of reasons, approving this special permit makes sense in this location. It's consistent with what is going on on the other side of Park Avenue, what's already allowed on this side of Park Avenue. And yes, it's expanding up into the Warner Ave area, but we think that the buffers that we're proposing have worked for other residents in the past, and will work for these as well. So we hope that you'll consider that favorably. Thank you for your time. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Steph? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, Dana, I want to thank you for the very, that great concise presentation. And I know we've been working on this a lot. I also want to introduce, I have Steve Liptek with me tonight. He's right behind me. He's our operations manager, my used car manager, and he's been working for me for 17 years, just turned 35, so more than half his life he's been working for me. He is the meticulous guy that keeps everything so neat at 809 Enfield Street. He does all the plowing. He is as neat as they come. So our intention is really to clean up the property, demolish the house that's, you know, that's been sitting there that everybody wants to go away on Enfield Street, and clean up the property that hasn't been attended to in such a long time, and make it look as neat and clean as the property that we just developed on 809 Enfield Street. So, thank you.
Thanks. Steph?
Thanks. Hi.
Hi.
I agree with Gary. Dana gave a very great presentation, and I truly believe that this is a good site for this use. They will be decreasing nonconformities. They will be cleaning up the property, and it's certainly going to look a lot nicer than it does right now. I did have a little bit of concerns about the landscaping, mostly because the landscaping before, hold on, I want to keep that up. So the landscaping was done strictly within the BG zone and adjacent to, but now we're including two entire residential zoned properties. And my concern is that some of the existing vegetation, particularly on the northeast there, is pretty sparse. It's, yeah. It's kind of old. It's older vegetation. It's kind of sparse. It's, they're like old wire fences. And, you know, this is going to increase the, not the intensity as far as passenger cars, but just the activity is going to be increased from what is there now, which is almost nothing. Now, what's been done in the past, I can't really speak to that. I know that it's been utilized. You probably know more than I do as to that it used to be, I think, a town, like, a town impound. So, I mean, that probably was not a great, you know, thing to have right next to you. So, I mean, this is better than that, but I just thought you have the opportunity to provide a little bit more screening to the major residential community than just the arborvitie or just the fencing. So that's why I did give you some opportunities to consider some alternatives. So under 10.10.7, parking lot landscaping. Number two, when existing facilities are expanded, the commission shall have the right to approve the location of the required landscaping in areas other than the interior or end parking lot islands in the newly constructed areas, to approve a modification of the size of the required landscaped areas, and to approve other modifications to landscaping requirements so as to spread the new landscaping throughout the existing and newly constructed parking area. So that is, so if you recall, there should be 15% landscaping in a parking lot. Now, I just want to say this real quickly. We are updating our zoning regulations, and I do think that we need to treat this type of use differently than a standard parking lot. But however, right now, that is a requirement. And Section 1020, the commission may modify the buffer yard standards when, in the opinion of the commission, the adjoining land users are sufficiently protected. And again, this is a discussion item that you, as the commission, can consider. Let's see, what else? Let's see. The lighting plan, so we've always interpreted our lighting plan that says that you should have zero trespass. So my assumption is, is if there's no lighting up, and maybe I'm wrong and didn't read the plans correctly, but on those two residential parcels, if there's no lighting there now, then there should be no lighting beyond the property line. So that's what I'm getting at, is it really, you shouldn't be increasing lighting.
No, we agree. We want to shine a light on, I'm sorry.
Right. So, and that's pretty much it. We did receive comments from the fire department today, no concerns for planning and zoning. And although they weren't written out in OpenGov, John Kabobo did give us the comments, which I've included as 1, 2, and 3, on the proposed site-specific conditions. So there's the idea of how or if you want to modify the buffers. And then I had also made suggestion in the first memo, that motion to approve the waiver per Section 10.20 Point C to modify the 35-foot landscape buffer from business to residential to a 10-foot landscape buffer with, and then I said, options that you could consider, with additional plantings and/or with the solid six-foot-high vinyl fence. But overall, I think this is a great plan. I think it's a great use, and I think that we could work something out here.
Okay. So, anything else? This time, I'll open it up to the public, and I do have a list here. Jaclyn Bilyeu. Come on up. Name and address, and let's hear what you got to say. Make sure the little red light's on.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. I'm Jaclyn Bilyeu. I live at 3 Warner Ave. So I have a lot of questions. We are a no outlet. There are four no outlets off of Belmont, and none of them have a sidewalk, so please do not make them put a sidewalk, because it's no outlet. I guess one of my main questions is going to be the lighting, which I know they're saying zero, and I love that it's the idea of zero, but there's this, oh, we'll try, we don't really know. I know as far as the residential properties, so if you, is there any way someone could pull up so I could see the map for the GDNT layout, so I can see Warner in the back of 6?
Dana knows how to do that. If you could just, like, reduce it.
Sorry, there we go. So if you see, like, the bushes, right there, beautiful, so 3, that's me, and then those bushes, that's the back of Warner. So that's all of us that are here. And then there's another, there's other people, I think, here as well. So this is a no outlet. We definitely don't want sidewalks. I want to know how far up lights are going to come, because, one, I have chronic migraines. I cannot have lights, like, in my face. My bedroom's right there, and my living room's right there. I want to make sure that the second egress, because I know you need another legal means of egress, is not going to come onto our road, whether that's a 17, whatever ton truck you've got coming down the road. I don't want that, because our kids play on the road. I have a nine-year-old, I have a two-year-old, and I have a nine-month-old, and they're going to be growing up. You've got other kids on the street that ride up and down all day. Not all day, because they're at school, but you know what I mean. As for the Troyano lot currently, what they're going to lease for the bushes, yeah, I definitely agree with Lori on that one, where there are scarce trees, there's bigger trees. But my husband maintains that for the most part. We have called the town before. I know the Troyanos had their sons, the little guys, come out a few years ago, but my husband's the one that maintains that for the most part. And if you miss it once in the summer, I'm not a tall woman, and it's taller than me, but still, it goes into the road for the drainage. I want to make sure that the drainage, because we have draining problems on the road as it is. There is from both roads, from both sides of the road, so you see the four dwellings. My house is three. That's built in 1920. And from talking to 9 Warner Avenue, that was a horse carriage. That was where the horses used to live. And 5 and 7 were sold at the same time, so at one point, it was all one property. And so, in the middle of 5 and 7, there's a sewer grate, and that started to go into the ground more and more. And we want to make sure that if you're doing all this work, we're only, there's only four of us. And if you're going to do all this work, let's do it now and get it handled, rather than wait and wait and wait. But yeah, definitely, please, no sidewalks. Please, no sidewalks. Because then that means my husband's going to have to shovel them. Like, we live in a neighborhood, and it's just the four of us, and we really stick together. We really do. 4 Warner, that gentleman, he's not here, but he lives right across from me. He's adjacent to the Troyano lot, and he helps, like, we all really like each other. We all take care of one another, and we don't want sidewalks, I'll tell you that right now. And we're just concerned about the lighting. So I won't take up any more time, because I know other people want to say something. And we'd like a start date and end date to the landscaping and construction, because we work shift work. So we're working people, and we don't want noise all day and night. And that's it.
Thank you. Jennifer Briet. Briet, I'm sorry.
Jennifer Briet, 83 Park Ave. I have some concerns about this project. First, starting with the house that was taken down last year on Park Ave. My research shows that that was built in 1833, and that was torn down for a parking lot. I understand it was not zoned, Residential 33, and so it wasn't protected. 8 Warner was built in 1920, and it is R33, and it's another house that is going to be torn down. Enfield has a housing shortage, and I take issue with tearing down homes to put up parking lots. This is a historic neighborhood. It may not be a historic district, but this is a historic neighborhood, and it is a mix of single and multifamily homes. All these properties are nonconforming to today's standards. There's a little scattered. Somewhere in the agenda packet, there was some talk about employee parking, and that it would not be, that employees would not be parking in the new section, because they're parking in the old section. There are no less than five cars, employee cars, parked on Park Avenue in front of the "No Parking From Here to Corner" sign daily. There were two cars left there tonight at 6:45 when I drove here. Someone consistently parks in the curb cut and the asphalt sidewalk on Park Ave. The car carriers are using Park Ave and Summer Street to bring the cars to and from here. That is, the neighborhood is too populated. It is too congested. There are too many children that play in this neighborhood for more car carriers to be coming up and down the street. I hope that you can address, at a minimum, the car carriers not using these residential streets and having to use Route 5 to get in and out of the parking lots to deliver the cars. I really hope that you guys can just not tear down another home for a parking lot. I struggle with that. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Maurice Pollock. Or, I'm sorry. Marsh, I didn't read it right. It's okay. Name and address, please.
My name is Marcia Pollock.
Okay.
And I live at 7 Warner Ave. We do have drainage. I'm concerned with that. I am concerned with all the houses he's been taking down, and I never even knew half the houses that he took down. And I am concerned about the delivery. He has had trucks in there up to 12:00 in the morning. I know this, because I have been woken up out of a sound sleep to slamming iron. And yeah, it made me mad, because now I can't get back to sleep. So I'm retired now, so I can't go there, but I'm sure other people have the same issue. And I am concerned about the lighting. And I just don't think the vegetation that he's planning to put there is going to block anything. It's not going to block the lights. It's not going to block the noise, and it's not going to block Route 5. So I don't, I am against this, but if it has to be, then it has to be. I'm not going to be irresponsible about it. But those are my concerns. You know, it's like, I've been there for 40 years, and it just keeps getting worse and worse. And how am I going to sell my house with all that across the street from me? So, and you know, if my house is worth, we'll just say $250,000, by the time Gary Rome moves in and does all that, I'll be lucky to sell it for what I bought it for at $90,000. And no, I don't want any sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Sorrell.
My name is Christine Sorrells, and I live on 9 Warner, and I own 12 Columbus, which is directly behind me. So I have two parcels directly across the street from the biggest part of this project, which is 8 Warner. We have met with Gary Rome, and he was great with addressing all of our concerns, but I care to back some of the concerns that my neighbors have already brought up. Please, for the love of God, do not make them put in a sidewalk, because you will take away the old, the old-town feeling that this neighborhood is desperately trying to hold on to. My house is not as close to the road as the others, and I'm set back, and I'm not against their lighting, because clearly they need to protect their assets. But I think that the neighborhood would be in agreement if, just ditch that last light, move it, just, I'm concerned about that last blackout light, even with a shield creeping over into the road and the front of the properties. But my biggest concern, and I speak, I think, for the town, is baby Jesus. Jesus has been part of that front of Troyanos forever. People drive past it with their kids out of tradition, and I would like to know if baby Jesus is staying. That's what I got.
Okay. Frank Troyano. Hi.
Frank Troyano. I live at 3 Warner Ave. Frank Troyano, I live at 1400 Enfield Street, here on behalf of Troyano Realty. My family's been working with Gary Rome for a while. I had a good idea what I was gonna say, but I guess I'm here to talk about Baby Jesus.
I think you better talk about that.
That's one of the things I'm gonna have to talk about. Our family's owned this property since my grandfather bought it in the Depression. It's my, where his actually, his home was, is the one that asked to come down, the one at 781. My uncle was born in the house, my father was not, so it has a lot of sensitivity for us, but it's had its time. And we've been working with Gary for probably nearly two years now about expanding this and trying to do something for the property. I was actually the one that sold Gary the property at, between 799 and 783, the old Thompson Road Garden Center to all those people that have been around for such a long time. The property itself has been very thoughtfully done. We're happy with Gary, we became a relationship. He's a wonderful guy, he's a family guy. We all seen his commercials with the dog and his family out there for, his desire to actually be a good business person, I think he is a good business person. We came to terms with him about doing something our family usually does not sell, it just happened to be a very awkward situation for us. We wanted to try to make something work, because we think he can make a better property for what we have in our future and what we're actually looking to do on that property ourselves. He came up with a very thoughtful plan, we met with Dana multiple times, we have a nice relationship with Dana, as you know, as well. We think Gary's got a great plan and a good opportunity for Enfield and Route 5, which is a very chopped-up, difficult street to try to really make right. And we think he really came up with a good idea, trying to blend it into the neighborhood as best he could, to use what he has, and that's where he actually approached us. So, we actually went through this, we walked the property multiple times. The property over at 781, it's been desired to be demoed from all of us for a long time. That's something that we've been desired to have done. It's sad, but it's reality, it's just the way it goes. And to take a house down and put up a parking lot, it's kind of like the old song from the 70s, but at the same time, it needs to be done. It's one of those things that's, it's a good fit. He's putting in a fence that's sensitive for us along that same edge of the property. He's gonna put a fence that's gonna cut the demising area between Warner Avenue and that small 767 property behind our former garage area. It allows us to still utilize that property and still have it be a thoughtful presentation for a future tenant. It is unoccupied right this minute, except by Troyano Oil. And it was also mentioned many times that this is a Troyano property. We lease it, it is property is owned by Troyano Realty, which is our family group, so, just to make that clear. My grandfather's house and that area in the back, it's all, including the old garage, it's all part of that same group. The Baby Jesus question, I think I have to answer that. The goal here is, we put the nativity up, ever since my grandfather passed, we put it up every year, and we're just gonna move it over to the edge on Belmont. You know, that's something, we're gonna probably move it on that side. We own that property as well, it's just one of those things where, we'll put it out there, we'll put it, we'll be, it's sensitive, and we'll make sure that that's still there. We hear about that probably 100 times a year, that it's nice to see those traditional things, regardless of religion, religious or faith, it's just nice to see those old traditions continue. And I think that's kind of what we're doing here. We're changing from one generation to another, and that's why we wanted to speak in favor of Gary's opportunity. It's not an easy thing to run a business on Route 5 with all the different cuts and the different levels of residential, like our property is partially, even though it's BG, it's a residential house and it's always been that way. But it actually has to be, you know, adjusted. And I think Gary and Dana came up with something that was very thoughtful. I think he's very sensitive to the neighborhood, he obviously has done it. I don't know a lot of issues that he's had with the neighbors already. He certainly has already made it a point that we always try to do, is to approach the neighbors before you come to the hearing, and really try to make sure, try to get the best possible presentation. And I think he's done that. I think he has a little bit of conversation to bring up here, but I think that it's something that he can actually do for the town, and I think it's better for this property. And I just want to let you know, we speak in favor of this on behalf of our family. After how long we've been there, you know, we see this as a great opportunity for Gary to improve the property and prove the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Especially for addressing the Baby Jesus for the people. Okay.
I'm sorry, if I may, if I may, one more thing. Gary did remind me, it's something else we talked about. In addition to what Gary is doing, we're also gonna be doing some things on our property, and it's something that we talked about doing. The goal from, one of the conversations our family had was also, why don't we carry it over from one property to another? So, from, basically from 799, which is on the corner of Park and Route 5, he's taking care of that whole area now, including our grandfather's house, that's actually mandated to come down as part of the deal. And he's gonna take care of it as he presented. There's gonna be a fence between, and then we have the old garage area, but the old gas station still has the canopy. So, part of what we're gonna be investing in, it's something we're doing, not Gary, but it's something we thought about talking together, and thank you for the reminder. We're gonna be taking down the canopy, we're gonna re-landscape the front, and we're also gonna change the mansard roof, so it actually blends in, and we're gonna repaint the building, so it looks more appropriate for Route 5 as well. We want to reinvest ourselves as that same problem, you know, opportunity for, I guess you can say, bring it to the next corner, which also means the next building, we're gonna repaint and change our awning that's out front as well. We're not going anywhere, that's not part of what's going on here, but we want to be a good neighbor, and we want to be a good steward to the town, and we think is where the town is actually working its way down Route 5, we want to be part of that change, like Gary is doing, we're gonna do the same thing ourselves, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience would like to speak for Gens?
Jennifer Briet, 83 Park Ave. Just one more thing that I thought, I forgot to mention. And what, what keeps this parking lot sprawl from continuing deeper into our neighborhood? It's on Park Ave, it's on Warner next. What, what is going to keep our residential neighborhood a residential neighborhood? Thank you.
The applicant like to come up and address some of this?
Thank you. Again, Dana Steele from JR Russo. I'd like to respond to some of the comments that we received first regarding the property at Three Warner Avenue, that's this property here, kitty corner across from the property at Six Warner Ave, and asked about where are the light poles in relation to nearest light, there are no light poles being proposed on Six Warner. So, really, nothing even close to that property. There is a light pole here and here in front of Eight Warner, so, as far as Three Warner, pretty, pretty far away, so very minimal. No, you can see, these are all zeros here in this, in this corner around here, so no, no light, light levels at all. And, and again, as I said, that does, that assumes that bare open sight with no landscaping, so the landscaping's only gonna help to further limit the amount of spread of, of light. The, I know there was a number of people mentioned about sidewalks. Just to, just to clarify, the only sidewalks that we are required to install per your regulations, interpreted strictly, I guess, depending on how you interpret, is along this western frontage of Warner. No sidewalk would be proposed on the, on the east side of Warner in, in any case. So, I think maybe, it sounded like some were maybe concerned that sidewalks would be over here on the, on the odds, the odd house number side, and that is, that's never been contemplated and wouldn't be something I don't think that you could require for this, this application. So, so just wanted to clarify that. Hours of construction, Gary told me that, yeah, they're not gonna do evening construction, so it's gonna be just a day, a day operation for construction, and it's just temporary until, until it's built. And I think he wants to get started as soon as possible, right?
As we're permitted.
Yeah, as soon, as soon as you were given all the approvals from the town, all the pre-construction meetings and bonds and whatever's required, then we'd like to begin construction. And we'll be respectful of none of that occurring in the evening or at night. Regarding Eight, Eighty-three Park Avenue comments, it's mentioned about employee parking on, on Park Avenue. So, Gary said, yeah, there has been some, and that's because they need more space, and this is gonna help to solve that problem. So, having more, more parking is gonna eliminate the need for any, any parking on Park Avenue. Regarding car carriers using side streets, we agree, car carriers should not be using the side streets. We weren't aware of, of that. Gary, do you wanna?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So, if, if that does happen, we just need to know about it, and we can contact the carriers and let them know, but they're not supposed to deliver after 7:00 PM at night, period. And if that does occur, we need to know that, so that Steve can contact the carrier and make sure that doesn't happen again.
Yeah, and, and just the, the last comment that she made regarding parking lot sprawl, we understand the concern, and that's why this is, for this use particularly, is a special use permit, and you, you don't have to approve it, but we, we think that we've demonstrated that it's, that it's compatible with this area, and it's not asking for too much. It's not going overboard with, with extending, we think it's, it's a reasonable expansion and is going to work, work well with the neighborhood. So, the good thing is, you're, you're in control of that, so you, you, you don't, just because you approve this doesn't mean you have to approve more expansion somewhere else. Every application is considered on its own merits, and so I would just encourage you to look at the merits of this particular application and decide if you think this is appropriate for this location. Seven Warner Ave raised concerns about drainage. The thing I would say regarding drainage, the site is sloped from the south to the north. Everything slopes this way from the south to the north. This site slopes out to the, to the west towards, towards Route 5. So, so that was Seven Warner, that's over here. Yeah, so, what, I don't know what's going on with the drainage on these properties that are beyond the limits of our, our property, but I know, speaking with the town engineer, that these catch bases in the road go through this, this pipe, which is a town pipe that runs through the, the Troyano Realty, apologize for Troyano Realty, not Troyano Oil. And, and so, the town has said, yeah, this, this system is, is not ideal, it's not working optimally, and that's why we were given direction, don't touch it, don't add anything to it. In fact, if you can reduce water flowing to it, great, and that's what we've done. We've, we've taken water that was, was going there and sending it straight to the, to the, to the, out, out, out to Route 5. It's all going to Route 5 either way, but it's, it's providing a little bit of relief here on this system in Six Warner, which has a, an effect upstream as well. It's gonna, you know, the less, the less taxing the drainage system is down here, the better it is for the upstream properties, too. So, how, how much is it going to, going to help? Probably not, not significantly going, going to help, but it's certainly not going to be worse. We are making it better, so. Deliveries, so it was also mentioned deliveries at 12, 12 o'clock, 1:00 AM, I think Gary's already mentioned that's not, not allowed.
It's not acceptable.
Yeah, and if, and if it happens, it, it, it needs to be reported so that it can be enforced and stopped, whatever needs to be done to make sure that doesn't happen. With regard to lighting, again, it was a common theme, we understand, we, we don't want to have excessive lighting. Our, our lighting levels are, are, I think, reasonable and moderate, and after understanding more, the staff's recommended condition with regard to lighting. My only suggestion is that number six, instead of final lighting, shall show zero lighting, instead say, final lighting shall show no increase onto adjacent properties. I don't know if that would be acceptable, but that's just a, my thought of suggesting how to, how to capture that discussion that we were having about the difference between not increasing versus true zero. Okay, so, and then regarding noise, I don't think this is a very noisy use. I mean, it's compared to other, other uses, I mean, you don't have any.
There's no work being done there.
Yeah, there's really, there's not a, a lot of activity really going on there, it's cars just are pretty quiet when they just sit there. So, and not that they're being ignored, they're, they're hopefully staying there for a short period of time as they get sold and, and get replaced with another one, but, but that's, I think, is what I was talking about, in terms of uses that could go in here, I can think of uses that would be noisier. And so, I think from, from that standpoint, it is a, a good fit. Then Nine Warner, Six Columbus, also mentioned the sidewalks, and I, and they're also across the street, so really sidewalks would not impact them anyway, but certainly cutting down these trees would. So, we ask you to consider that. I think there's a, there's a way for you to approve this without sidewalks, but we will consent to a condition if that's what you determine is required. I think that's it, anything else, Gary?
No, I just, I want to thank the neighbors for coming up and speaking. I, I do think it's really important, we are all about community and all about our neighbors. And in fact, when I met with, with some of the neighbors, I said, well, you're our neighbors, and I want to do the right thing, so that's why I want to get your feedback, and you're our future customers, and as it turns out, Jackie and her husband have two Kias that they purchased from us already. So, you know, we all, we want to do the right thing, and we want to do the right thing in the community, so that's why we're here to talk to you and find out if our plan meets your standards.
Okay. Christian, any questions?
I mean, as far as, I mean, I definitely have concerns. I, I strongly disagree with that this is, this is an improvement of the land. I, I mean, I will make it clear, Six and Eight Warner are zoned residential. One of those properties has a house that is planned to be taken down. So, this would be an expansion of a business use that's not allowed in residential areas into a residential neighborhood, right in the center of town, too. So, it'll be highly visible. I saw, so, so that, that's a major concern for me. It's one thing to be expanding their use in the business zone, which I understand, and Seven Eighty-One is in the business zone. That, that, you know, it's time has come. It's correct, you know, some, some business use can go there, and one of those business uses can be a parking lot. I don't love it, but, but, but that's allowed. I can't say the same about the, the residential neighborhood, which is Six and Eight Warner. So, so that's a major concern of mine. I don't really have a question there. I, it's, I don't, I don't agree that it's compatible with the neighborhood. Business general zone, yes. But then the other, the other concern is that there was no attempt at landscaping planned here. They, they tried to modify all the buffers, they provided the bare minimum, zero parking lot landscaping. One, the, the section that Lori quoted, 10.10.7 subsection BII, talks about existing facilities being expanded. And it does give us the right to adjust landscaping, which I think is perfectly reasonable. But I think that last section was kind of glossed over. "We can approve modifications so as to spread the new landscaping throughout the existing and newly constructed parking area." They, they've not proposed any new planting in the parking area, except to act as a buffer. They're not, they're not trying to spread it across the existing and new property. They're just trying to avoid the 35-foot buffer so that they can squeeze in as many parking spaces as possible across the street from residences in a residential neighborhood, and, and in fact, take down a, a, a home in, in, as well. So, yeah, I mean, I, I am concerned about taking, taking down a, a functional home in a residential neighborhood for a parking lot, for a use that's not allowed in the residential neighborhood. And unfortunately, I won't be able to vote in this manner. You know, I would, I would request that at the very least, we, we try to get a improved landscaping plan. I, I wouldn't even condition it, I would like to see a landscaping plan that actually attempts to adhere to our landscaping regulations. But even then, I, I, I can't support the expansion into the residential neighborhood.
Okay. John?
I have no questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, so how long would you anticipate the construction would take from start to finish?
Four, four months, four to six months, depending on my permitting.
So, it's not like a year or two?
Oh, God, oh, gosh, no.
Okay. Also, one of the, one of the neighbors mentioned how her husband does, trims the stuff, trees in the back. Are you guys gonna be responsible for the landscaping maintenance?
Yes, 100%.
It sounds like, you know, there's not a lot done about it now, but, but once you have your facility in place here, I would think you should be trimming the trees and making sure. the trees and making sure they're looking nice. So, looks like you'd be out of a job.
That's fine.
Yes, thank you for that comment. We are very meticulous, and that area in the back has been overgrown for quite some time. But we use Spazarini landscaping to do all our landscaping, and they're there almost every week.
Okay.
Walter?
I'll speak later.
Okay. Vinnie?
Yeah, just two things. One that Lori had mentioned, I kind of have a concern with the same thing with the buffering being thinned out in that one area. So, Dan, if we could try, look, my biggest goal, just listening to the people, is A, we gotta do something with the lighting. I think try something better for where their concern is, that one area, something.
Yeah, well, I think when I talked about the condition, we can work with that.
That, and definitely just a little bit more of the buffering. I'm not, usually I'm big on all the plants. I'm not so concerned about the front of Route 5 right now. I mean, I am, as more concerned as the back area that buffers these houses. If we keep that buffer staying there and keep the lights off it, that would be, that's huge.
Yeah, I think the area that Lori was most drawing attention to is this area here along the north side of six Warner that does have vegetation, but not very tall vegetation. There's a chain link fence. I think it's only four foot high chain link fence. So, it's not a great screening there. But it's an existing site. It's not being, we're not changing it, other than that we're going to be parking cars there, very quiet use. As far as putting more landscaping in there, the problem is that's where the drainage pipe is. The town's drainage pipe runs right through there. So, and that's why there isn't more mature vegetation, because it can't grow on top of a town drainage pipe. So, unfortunately, that's limiting what can be done. We could put up a fence, you know, a bigger fence, but as far as, we can't do a lot, we could put shrubs in, I think we could do that, but that's not going to really be any better than what they, what's there now, I think. Maybe it'll look a little nicer, but it won't provide any more screening.
So, let me ask you just a question, because I know you probably know where I'm going with this. Can you put dirt on top of a town sewer? So, if you have a town sewer, you can put dirt on the top of the town sewer, like a berm?
A berm.
Like a wall, like a lot of we.
Yeah, I mean.
So, what I'm thinking is, so you don't do the planting, but you make some kind of a berm with, when you're cleaning up your property, so you're not bringing in too much fill anyways, and you don't have to remove the fill, what's not good. And if you make a berm, and then you keep the smaller plants on it, you exceeded over your height, right?
Yeah, I mean.
You know the plan right there.
There's only 10 feet to work with, so the berm couldn't be very high, 10 feet in width to work with.
10 feet, so six feet.
If we put in a berm, well, if you have like three to one slopes, then that would be less than two feet in height. So, if you came just to a point within that space. Plus, you'd have to cut all the vegetation that is there in order to put that in.
Yep.
And just in general, the approach that we were taking was because this property is, Gary Rome doesn't own, he's just leasing it, he was not proposing a lot of improvements there. We're not proposing any lighting in here. So, in terms of like, what are we really protecting it from, it would only be the parking use. It would be the seeing the vehicles or, but as far as light levels, it's not, it's not being intensely lit. There's no new lighting being proposed in here. So, this is basically going to using it the way it is now. We're not really changing it. You know, it's been, it's been a car storage parking area, and it's going to continue to be. So, that's how we were looking at it. But, yeah, we're willing to do whatever is practical to do. And I think we're limited on any kind of taller trees in that are because of the drainage. We could do a solid fence there, but our, I explained our reasoning why we didn't propose that, so.
And I can understand the fence situation, because you do have the sewer there. You cannot put a fence on the sewer. So, it's not that, it's more the blocking to eliminate, we're trying to make the neighbors a little bit, I mean, they're upset about losing a house, but I guess my answer to that is, if you don't sell your house to a developer, it won't turn into a parking lot. I guess that's the only way to stop that. That's all. I'm just trying to make it, think, put yourself in nurse's shoes for a second, living there. I guess the lighting bothers me, would bother me. So, if you could stop the lighting from going there, rather you throw the shrubs in.
Like I said, there is no lighting.
If there's no lighting there, then I would say you'd be all right.
Yeah, the nearest lights are way over here in the center of the.
So, nowhere near where the other houses are. So, what are they?
Maybe they didn't know that.
Yeah, so there's no lights being proposed on six Warner Ave.
Wrong.
So, we're not proposing any expansion there. We're not expanding the pavement. We're just using what's there, continuing to use it, cleaning it up, yeah. So, just working with what's there on the property. So, we'd like to leave it the way that it is, but I mean, I think Triano's had a good relationship with the neighbors, too, and if there was a major concern, they probably would have already addressed it.
I agree.
And I think Triano and Gary Rome together will remain vigilant about that. Right, Gary? So, I think it's something that could be addressed in the future. But again, we're willing to submit to any kind of conditions that you think are appropriate or reasonable. So, we're willing to work with you.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Just a question. Is there two houses coming down?
Yes, there's the one at eight Warner.
Right.
And there's the one at seven eighty-one on Route 5.
Are they occupied?
No.
No.
What kind of condition are you in? Not that it makes a difference, but are they uninhabitable?
The one on Enfield Street is not inhabitable at all.
Okay.
And I think it's part of, maybe called blight.
Yeah.
And the one on the back piece is currently not inhabitable. It doesn't have anything inside the house. There's no heating or, there's no heating system, no oil tank, there's nothing in there.
So, they've been vacant for some time?
Yes.
Okay.
Frank?
Thank you, Man of Chair. I really liked the project. I think it's really going to bring the area back. I remember it for my whole life. It was always a nice area there. And like everybody said, the cars were back there. They were always wrecked cars. It was an impound locked lot for all the bad crashes in town. All the cars were kept there, and a lot of sad situations were back there over the years. As far as the north side buffering, being the condition of that drain pipe, it might even be better just to stay away from it completely. I don't even know if you should be driving heavy equipment over it. I mean, it sounds like the town's.
Yeah, we weren't tending to touch it at all.
I don't, I mean, fence would be nice, if you could do something, but I don't, just by the reaction of the engineering department, it seems like they don't want you fooling around that pipe at all. So, other than that, oh, the sidewalks, just so everybody knows, we've been, and I've been one of the commissioners, that have been very, very, very strict on our sidewalk regulations. Usually people in neighborhoods want sidewalks, because it adds value.
Right.
And I know that area well, it is a dead end of the street. And the neighbors are, you know, all the neighbors are saying no sidewalks, so I don't think we'll be setting any precedent. And if you do, like you said, we're not, we couldn't require you to do sidewalks on the east side. We could require you to do them on the west side. But then, you're going to be taking those trees down, which the people probably like, that are by that gate. That is a gate, that gate's always been there forever and ever.
This gap here.
Right, but those trees are probably giving shade to the east side of the street. But I just want to tell you that we've been very strict with our side. You've probably seen this.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. That's why I didn't know what your decision would be regarding the sidewalk. I think.
Usually families want sidewalks, and we've been very strict with all the new development. We're making everybody do the sidewalks. We've had applicants ask for waivers. Being that this is such a small street, I think every property owner is here speaking against sidewalks. I don't know if they're confused, thinking they're going on their side.
No, no, no.
No, I'm sorry, you can't talk to us.
So, usually people want sidewalks. So, you know, I'm just going to leave it at that, and I'll defer to the rest of our board here, but we're not going to set any kind of precedent here. We've been very, very strict on our sidewalk ordinance. And again, I think this is going to be a great, great project. Just seeing what Gary's done from the day one and everything he's put his hands on, it's always looked great. So, I'm confident in that it's going to be a nice project, and good luck with it. Thank you.
Karen?
No, I'm good.
You're good? Okay, well, actually, you answered a lot of my questions that I had written down. The one question I still have is the late deliveries, the banging. Do you have, and do you have cars being dropped off by tow trucks that have, you know, broken down, and they're bringing them to your facility to be repaired, if that's happening? And maybe that's what's causing the noise? No?
Yeah, very seldom we have a tow truck come in after hours. I think what our neighbor on Park is referring to is a delivery from a trailer truck that probably didn't want to take a nap, didn't want to sleep overnight, just wanted to deliver the cars and leave. But we could certainly make that a condition if they're going to deliver cars to us, they can't deliver them after 7:00 p.m.
Okay.
And if there is an infraction, we want to hear about it so that we can, excuse me, Steve, is it diversified? Is that the? Yeah, there's two carriers that we use, yeah.
Okay. Walter, I'm coming back to you, because you said you had comments.
I'm in favor of this also. I think it's a great use of the property. Also, no sidewalk, because I, it's just more cleanup for somebody, and the neighbors don't want it. So, why give them something they don't want? And, you know, you've got two houses that are, you could probably hear them crashing down. So, we're just taking two houses down, and, you know, either somebody's going to have to repair them, or we take them down. So, I think to take it down would be the better thing, so. Definitely in favor. But again, I'm not voting, so.
All right, I'm going to open it up again to the public, if anybody would like to come and speak for a second time. This is a public hearing, so.
Do I have to say my name and stuff again? All right, Jaclyn Billu, three Warner Ave. All right, so, cool, so the no sidewalks. I just need to read my notes, sorry. For, just to go back to the drainage thing, if the town engineer knows that the drainage in our neighborhood isn't working.
That's something you have to take up with the town.
How do I do that?
That is, you can see Lori after.
Okay, cool. And then for the trees that are, that have been spoken about behind the property that they're leasing, there are two or three, I have pictures, there are two or three large trees. Everything else is just weeds.
Don't clean it up.
Okay, so.
They're going to be cleaning up the property.
As long as they clean it up, that's fine, like leave the big trees, but as long as it gets cleaned up and bushwhacked, I get it. I just wanted to make sure that, there was something said about a 35-foot buffer, and then there was something said about a 15% of landscaping, and I just wanted to see like what that meant, because there was arborvitae's that are in front of nine, but they're these little tiny johnnies, they're not anything large or anything. So, what is the buffer, and like what are you guys allowed to say from the road to, like, are you guys like allowed to negotiate here? Like, I don't know how this works, so.
It's okay. We will, once we close the meeting, have a discussion and make decisions about the buffer.
Okay, so what are we going to be allowed to hear?
Yeah, you're welcome to stay until we adjourn tonight.
Oh, beautiful. Okay, thank you.
And if you don't, you can re-watch this on ETV, on YouTube.
Oh, cool, thank you.
Yeah, okay, okay. Anybody else like to come and speak? Frank?
It's not about baby Jesus.
Okay. Name and address.
Frank Triano, 1408 Enfield Street in Enfield. I just wanted to clarify, there's questions, and Commissioner Christian mentioned the houses back there. I'm intimately familiar with the one, actually both of them. I used to own both of them. My grandfather's house, obviously, in the front is part of our family's property. The one in the back is actually, used to be part of the Thompsonville Garden Center. There actually used to be greenhouses on that property. And I say that because when I grew up, and I was with my grandfather in the back, we were friends with the greenhouses next door. They were not, it was not a residence, and it was never anybody, anybody living there, and I can promise you nothing since the 60s, if not earlier. The house is currently not habitable. I actually sold it to one of the neighbors, who was actually acquired it later on, when Gary actually purchased it himself. So, it is not habitable now, it is not habitable before. And I can also assure you that the, I can't change the zone, I agree with you there. The use of that property on both sides was actually business for many, many years. My grandfather bought that house in the 30s, so, excuse me, his property in the 30s. The impound lot was regulated by the town, as Commissioner Laimo mentioned, and it was regulated every year for towing, and it has never changed since. So, although it is residentially zoned, it's always been active as a business property. And that includes the one next door as well. I just wanted to clarify, because you actually mentioned that as well. But both of those houses are not habitable, and we agree with that as well. And I know that for a fact. Just wanted to clarify, because I knew that knowledge, and I just want to make sure I pass it on.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Anybody have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. Are you gentlemen familiar with the site-specific conditions that were, were you in part of the negotiation of those six conditions?
Yeah.
So, I just had some questions about four and five.
Okay.
The solid vinyl fencing is to be installed around the perimeter, with the exception of along Enfield Street and Park Avenue. So, does the vinyl fencing include that area on the north side where the piping is?
The way I would, currently, the plans do not propose, don't comply with this. So, if you include this condition, then we would have to add vinyl fencing along this north side here and along the frontage of seven ninety-nine that abuts residential here, where that's an existing buffer. We're not changing it, we're not changing the use there at all. But the way I read this, the fence would be there as well, so.
Yeah, that's the way I read it, too. I just wanted to clarify.
So, that's not what we're proposing, but you can require it. So, if that's what you choose to do, then we'll have to put it in. We felt that where we're expanding, we should provide the fence and the plantings, because that's what we did over at six Park Avenue. We did the same thing, fence and plantings. So, wherever we're doing something new, we're providing that. Whatever's already there, six Warner and seven ninety-nine, we were leaving it as is. That was our thinking, the way, our rationale, how we approached it. But yes, if you incorporate it as it's written, then, if you wanted to, you could just eliminate it, if you're happy with the way we're proposing it, that number four, or you could modify it to say something else, if, depending on what you want. Like, if you're more concerned about the north end here, you could, you could say you want a fence on the north side or something, so.
Well, what I was trying to understand is the landscaping plan, because Commissioner D'Antonio had mentioned about the landscaping. So, the solid vinyl fencing would actually end up being part of the landscaping, per se.
Um.
But then, continuing on.
I suppose.
Yeah, just continue on to number five, the 35-foot buffer is reduced to 10. However, we must provide arborvitae or other plantings along with the fencing. Does that cover the north side as well? Where the pipe is?
If I may, if I may, so, that was sort of like an alternative. So, I just wanted to write these out beforehand, because we always have these site-specific conditions.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is, it looks like we have an opportunity to have some landscaping, you know, a tree line, a tree lion or arborvitae's, all of these kinds of things in.
Right.
You know, a little more than what. You know, a little more than what's shown on the plan.
Right. So my proposal was that especially along anything that had a residential boundary and especially in that section. I mean, I agree that the water line goes through there, but I don't see any reason that you couldn't put a fence on the property line, at least just to help...
Okay.
...protect the rest of the residential.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be in favor of doing, doing those things.
That line would be different. This is your decision if you, if you think a different alternative or different placement of plantings is more feasible, that's, that's your decision.
Okay.
So that's why I just wanted to bring that to light.
Okay, thank you.
Could I comment on that?
Uh, I guess.
Yep.
So the reason that we didn't propose a fence along the previous planting is because those arborvitae's are already mature and they're, they've already grown up. And of course, we would put arborvitae's and vinyl fence over there. My question to you is, if you suggested that we put a fence on the north side over there, what would we do with the fence that's owned by the resident over there?
Well, that's on our property, the fence. Yeah, the fence is on our property, so we would remove it and replace it with a vinyl fence if, if you made that a condition.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's not what we're proposing, but you can add conditions to this special permit.
Okay.
Just a question Vinnie could probably answer. So if you do put a fence over that pipe, do you have to go down four feet with the posts?
So let me, let me show you the existing...
I'm just concerned...
Jason.
Be on the north side of the trench.
So can you see that, that dash line here?
Mm-hmm.
That's where the pipe is. So the fence is to the side of it. So the, a fence could go in on the property line and it wouldn't affect the pipe.
Okay.
But, but putting trees in that 10-foot area would be right on top of that pipe and that would be an issue.
And the roots can go down.
I don't think the town would let us do that.
Right. The fence isn't gonna... Just leave it up to everybody else to see what you think.
I also want to just clarify, someone asked, mentioned that, that the drainage is not working. Maybe that's what I said, I don't, no, but just to clarify, the drainage is at or exceeded capacity. So it's just, you know, it should probably be bigger. So we certainly don't want to add more water to it, so that's, so that's why we're not, we're not adding any toward it. But it's not that it's not working.
That's the way I understood it, just that capacity. That's what I understood.
It's a capacity issue, yeah.
And, yes, Christian?
First, I do want to clarify for the resident who's asking about the buffer. Just to clarify, our regulations require that when there is a business or industrial use that abuts or is across the street from a residential use or residential zone. In this case, it would be a C buffer yard, which is 35 feet deep, which they are requesting an exception for. So that's 35 foot deep and according to our regulations, that would be composed of, every 100 feet of frontage would be four canopy trees, nine understory or evergreen trees and 15 shrubs. So it's, it's a fairly, I mean, it's, it's supposed to provide protection from, or that buffer from the residential to the, the more intense commercial use. So that's, you know, just for your information. So they're, they're requesting to shrink that possibly to 10 feet and allow for arborvitae's, like a solid wall of fairly tall evergreens. I mean, I think we should try to get more of a buffer personally. I mean, it seems the consensus here is that you guys all think this is a great plan and I don't understand it, but that's, that's your prerogative. I do think it's within the rights of the, these, this residential zone to get that buffer, so that 35-foot buffer would be along Warner as well as there is the existing property. Yeah, yeah, so it would be along Warner and then along... I don't know, I don't know how to describe, but there, but there would be more, a little bit more. It would not go up the commercial district. But I would ask for us to at least consider that, to provide a buffer for the residential zone. Again, it would mean they lose some parking spaces, but we're right in a residential area. I mean, I think that's, that's a fair trade-off. They're adding 200 more parking spaces. I mean, getting, or however, however many, they can say 100 more, however many they're adding. They're adding a significant number of parking spaces. I think it's reasonable for us to provide the buffer for residences as our regulations call for. So that's something, something I'll put out there. I don't, I don't think we need to allow for that, the exception. But I will say, put to the applicant, though, and again, I get you guys don't seem concerned with the landscaping, which is fair. I mean, it is a concern with me because Route 5 is a main thoroughfare of the town. This is right in front of the town. It's, it's right in the center of town. I think the way it looks from the street is important. Vinnie, I know you said the, the buffer is important to you from the residential zone and you weren't quite as concerned with the front side, but I think the front side's very important. They're required, there's not a lot of frontage here that they're actually affecting, so I think it would probably be one street tree that they would be required to add as, or frontage, one, one canopy tree. So I would ask us to at least, again, if you guys are not, if you guys are willing to be flexible with the interior landscaping, so be it, but let's at least get the landscaping from the, from Route 5, what you can see from the center of town and at least spruce that up. So, I mean, I'll put that to the applicant. Is that something you'd be willing to work with us? I mean, it's, it's not a lot of frontage that you're affecting, so that's, what, like 50 feet, maybe?
So you're talking about one, one street tree in front of 781?
I mean, that's, that's the only part of frontage that's impacted, that's, that's in scope here.
It's not a, it's not a big expense, but I think it's, what we, what we tried to do is to keep it consistent, you know? So what was approved in 2012, this is gonna be this, a continuation of that, so the, the pattern is, we're following.
I mean, there's landscaping there today with the residents, so you're not, you're not following the pattern, you're taking away landscaping.
The pattern of development of this, of 799, the way 799 was developed, this is following, this is following the same pattern as that.
Right, but that, that doesn't adhere to our current regulations...
Well...
...with regards to frontage trees and frontage landscaping.
Yeah, the waivers that, that were obtained then are the same ones that we're asking for now, so it's no... You follow what I'm saying?
I, I get what you're saying, okay, yeah. So you're, you're asking for consistency in waivers? Okay. Yep.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. Okay, so, so it sounds like there's not appetite and that's up to you guys to push that further. I would say the last piece would be on the sidewalk part, but not, not on Warner, the sidewalk's on Enfield Street. The sidewalk abruptly ends at the, at the front entrance of the existing house, 781. So it's just a straight curb drop, curb drop.
Extending it.
Yeah, so will you guys be extending that to the property line?
Yes.
I know the, the next-door property does not have sidewalks out of scope, should be at least extended.
Yeah, so this is a...
Yep.
Okay.
This is, this is a new sidewalk here that's... Oh, no, I'm sorry, there's an existing sidewalk already there.
Yep, there's an existing one.
Goes right through the driveway.
It goes through the driveway, yep. And it, and it, right now, it, it ends at...
Yes.
...the center of the house, which is probably not the property line. So it should go to the property line.
Yeah, you see, we're adding a ramp here. So it's DOT ramp 16, so we're adding in a ramp right there so that it won't be just drop-off.
Yep. Is there any, any proposed land... Again, I know you're pushing back against the, the frontage tree, understand. Is there any proposed landscaping in that area?
In this area here?
In the frontage, yeah.
We didn't propose any, but we, we certainly could provide some.
So, so you would at least be willing to provide landscaping in the frontage?
If I may, yeah, well, we'll continue where it says landscaping bed over there. We'll continue that so it's...
Continue it all the way down?
So consistent with, I think it's, it's like 25 feet is about the width of that piece of property, maybe, maybe it's 30. So, yeah, we'll just, we'll continue with the landscape bed like we have in front of the other property.
Okay.
Probably closer to 40 feet.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll continue the landscaping bed right across.
Okay, yeah. I'm trying to think, I'm trying to look to see if we have that as a condition of approval, but I just want to make sure we get that in there because that's not in their plans, so.
I will add it to the plans, but if you want to add it as a condition, but I will, we will agree to do that.
Appreciate that.
Walter?
The man is in the business of selling cars. Putting a car out there and somebody driving by will see the car. If you put a tree there, you're not gonna see the car. So he's not gonna sell any cars. So, yes, we could put a little low, very low landscaping, like, that's it. I mean, the car is what the man's trying to sell. People will drive by and say, "Wow, that's a nice car, I gotta stop in." Go down the street, turn around, come back and see the car and maybe make a sale. But if we put trees there, no one's gonna see the cars. And then in the back lot there, it was, it was, it was a tow yard. It was junk old clunkers and stuff, and he's putting brand-new cars out there now. So the view is 100% better, it's a win-win, so.
Frank?
Yeah, through the chair to Commissioner D'Antonio, I think you kind of referred to, at least me, maybe all of us, you were saying you didn't understand why, you know, we didn't, we just don't have a problem with this. And it's gonna be like it used to be, so it's probably the fact that you'd never, you've never seen it before, back in its day, and maybe you, you're not drawing the contrast, but that, it's gonna bring it back and even nicer to where it was before. So that just, it sounded like you were directing that, why are we just letting this go like this? That's the reason, that's my reason, it's gonna be really an improvement.
Okay. Vinnie?
All right, real quick.
We'll get back.
Commissioner D'Antonio, minor misunderstood me. I do want the front of it to look nice on Route 5. What I meant was not to just put up the big trees, but I definitely want the landscaping across. That's without a doubt, you know, but you don't, I, I didn't think, because you're selling cars and, and so forth, I didn't think the huge trees out front like we would normally do would fit in that one spot. And that was the only, that's what I meant, but I definitely want, would want to see all the, the landscaping in the front to continue, please.
Okay. And Christian, I know you want to answer.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, and Commissioner Laimo, I mean, that is your prerogative. I mean, I, again, I don't think that a, a expansion of a parking lot is a better use in a, in a residential neighborhood, but it's your prerogative and if you, yeah, that is what it is. I mean, as far as, as far as Commissioner Cruzel's, I mean, I do have to address that. Our, the, the idea that, that one tree every 50 feet, that's what our requirement is for frontage trees, one tree every 50 feet is going to block visibility of this entire parking lot. It, it, it won't even fully obscure a single car. I mean, a, a single car is however many feet wide. I mean, a very, very mature tree, like, it would take 50 to 100 years to get remotely that, and that's even if the species got that big. I, like, I, that's not, that's not a good reason to omit. I mean, what they're saying is consistency, which I think is valid.
I'm hearing what you're saying, I'm hearing what the other commissioners are saying, but that is, this public hearing is still open to the public and that's a discussion that we can have after it's closed. So at this time, you've got nothing else to add? Anybody in the audience would like to speak? I'm just opening it up this last time. Okay, Lori, you're on.
Thank you. So what I would request of the commission is to decide what buffer they want on which property line and whether there's a waiver or are they going 10 feet, are they going 35 feet? So...
Right.
That needs to be clarified, so we can put that on the site-specific conditions.
Yes.
I have added no deliveries after 7:00 PM and, and one, continue the landscaping bed and sidewalk along the frontage of 781 Enfield Street. So, but I don't have a means to copy that, so...
Okay.
But that's really, my concern is just for the commission to come to a consensus as to what landscaping they, and/or fencing you would like where and how big.
Okay. And we can do that in our deliberations.
Yep.
So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
He stepped out.
Kenneth Talensky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronellis, four.
Okay.
Public hearing is closed.
So let's talk about landscaping. So far, we have landscaping in front, a landscaping bed in front. We definitely don't want to have sidewalks in, in the rear. And I'm sorry, Lori, what was the other thing you wrote down? Oh, no deliveries after 7:00. And the fencing, that, that was the other thing, is you want, we got one that says all the way around. So let's just go down the line. Vinyl fencing. How do you want the vinyl fencing? We're just going down the line.
I feel like we should start with the buffer because the buffer would dictate the vinyl fence. So I would, I would rather see the 35-foot buffer.
Okay.
But if folks are willing to accommodate the arborvitae's, then, then yes, I would, I would support the fence. And, I mean, it's my opinion, I think the fence should be on the inside so that the neighbors can see the arborvitae's.
I agree with that.
Rather than the fence, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, could I just clarify something?
Sure.
I just want the commission to realize that the two parcels that are residential along Warner, there is no required buffer at that road.
Right.
Because it's residential to residential. However, there would have been a required 35-foot buffer at the bottom of those lots. So, I mean, the, the idea is that you might move that buffer as part of the reconfiguration, but I just want you to realize that, that there would be no buffer required there.
Right, okay. All right. John?
Yeah, you know, the, the fencing on the north side of 6th Warner probably, probably should match that, that or the rest of it, but other than that, I can't see doing anything with respect to, you know, I agree with the sidewalks, no sidewalks. I don't think anything's required for additional or for fencing or landscaping on, on Warner. I think the existing vegetation that's on 6th Warner, I drove down there and it is, it is pretty thick and heavy. I do have a question on Enfield Street with that 25-foot, that landscape bed or buffer. I know it says that, but it, there's no description as to what it is or what plantings there are. So I would say that, you know, that would be satisfied and they can work something out with, with staff and come up to some sort of agreement. You know, it, it really just says landscape bed, but it, it doesn't show anything for plantings. So if, if staff is okay with that, to work something out with the applicant, you know, on their final plan or, or do, or do we want them to come back and, and show something and propose it? So that's, those are choices that we, I guess, need to make here. And, and I certainly agree with the no deliveries after 7:00 PM at night, absolutely. And that's, that's about all I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess continuing the landscaping bed on Enfield Street, I would be happy just I would be happy just adding that as a condition and then letting staff work out what the type of landscaping would match, you know, whatsoever, whatsoever down the street from there. I'm in favor of the 7:00 p.m. restriction. That's, that's a great idea. I'd like to see the solid vinyl fencing as, as written on item number four, or proposal number four. Solid vinyl fencing is to be installed around the perimeter with the exception of along Enfield Street and Park Avenue. Question about the 35-foot buffer. You're saying it's only the in, Lori, you said it was only the internal borders of the residential lots?
So what they're seeking is to have the buffers that are between, which, which are minimal at this point, but because the, the residential and, and the commercial are to the south side of the residential lot. So there's really, there's no need for a buffer there, because it's going to be contiguous and, and part of the, the site plan. But anything elsewhere would have to have a 35-foot buffer, which isn't really quite, I'm trying to think. It would be to the north, but just to the base of the residential. And I'm, I don't think that there would really be any others, because they're already in existence. So, I mean, we could probably just take that out. Number five, the 35-foot buffer is reduced to 10 feet. However, must provide arborvitae or other plantings along with the fencing.
So that does not reduce it.
The point of that was because they're proposing a 10-foot buffer basically around.
Oh, okay, yeah, they already have that.
The whole.
Okay.
Development.
Okay, I'm good.
Terrence?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to see, I agree with the 7:00 p.m. and all that. I'd like to see that vinyl fence on the north side, just outside of the, just outside of the drain issue. And most of it, I'm, I'm quite pleased with. I, I don't see the need for all the landscape in a parking lot, because it's not a public lot. It's not a lot that people are going to be in and out of to make it look like a showcase. Guy wants to put his cars there. Makes sense. But that's all I have.
Frank?
No, I'm, I'm good. Glad, happy to see it's being repurposed, and good luck.
Joe?
I'm good with all the conditions that have been added on. I think we're, looks good.
Danny?
Yep, I'm also good with, with not having the sidewalks there. And the way they have this, this printed up and what we just added, I, I'm totally fine with it.
Okay. Walter?
I'm good with no sidewalks. I'm afraid if we start playing with that north side with that existing drainage pipe there, that we could, you know, they, they got to get machinery in there to put poles in and stuff to put a fence in. So we're already improving, they're already improving the drainage. They're redirecting the water the other way, so that will help the neighbors there with the drainage pipe. They're not going to add any more water to it. But I'm just afraid if we start messing with that area, that we could do some damage to that pipe. So I'm not, I'm not, I would leave the chain link fence just like it is and just worry about the fence along the back street there. And then Commissioner Alamo said we want to bring it back how it was. Well, we had Toyota sold here right across the street where North Main used to come here. My uncle bought six of them one night with his Caprice, because he went straight instead of taking a left turn. And then we had Fords down where CVS was. So we're just trying to recreate what was here. And, and they're doing a great job doing it, and we just continue the lot they've already done. They just want to continue down a little, one more lot down, that's all, so.
I do have one question, but it's kind of directed to a commissioner. What kind of equipment would be needed to put in a fence, a vinyl fence on that north side?
Nothing heavy at all.
Okay, all right.
Well, I mean.
I'm just asking.
So it weighs, so a human weighs whatever they weigh, and a pole-saw digger weighs about five and a half pounds.
Okay.
Concrete to install it would weigh more than, you know, if it was an open lane. You could bring machinery, but that's not.
Okay. I, I'm, and I do have that concern that Commissioner Cruzel had.
I agree with him also. I would not put any machinery on top of that pipe.
Okay. Okay. So any more discussion on this? Okay.
I guess I have, excuse me, but I guess I have a couple of questions on it as, as far as what the, what the waivers and/or added conditions are.
Okay.
For staff.
I'm with you.
You know, I want to get this clear.
That's why I tried to come up with some. At least we had something to work with.
It's good, but some of these are being a little bit changed as, as what you. I'm assuming number, on your sheet, number one, two, and three are staying as is.
Yes, I agree.
Number four, there's going to be, are we talking about a modification to that? And, and that's about the, the solid vinyl fence, because that shows, that's safe for all around the perimeter with exception to along Enfield Street. Which, which, would that also include Warner Avenue?
Yes.
So that's a, a complete envelope?
Correct.
You know, except for Enfield Street.
So it would include, so this, this is existing.
Yep.
So it would include all of this.
And, and also going across the, the west side of the, of six, of the back of 6 Warner Avenue, which would be the, the west side, which I think it shows it there now anyway.
That's, that's what, what's just being discussed along the, the drainage way.
So right now, it's not showing anything on Warner Avenue. So this, this would put that in there, correct?
I believe there's not any fencing proposed on Warner.
Right.
I might be wrong, but.
But condition number four would, would, would install fencing in there.
Yeah.
Which I'm somewhat opposed to, because I think to put that in there, you're going to cut down a lot of that existing vegetation. And I, I.
I believe there's a fence there now.
Yeah.
I mean, so, so this is what you could, I mean, this is why we need to have this conversation, because do you want it along here? Do you want them to replace it on number, is that four? Six, along 6 Warner or not?
Yes, six, I don't have, I don't have an issue with that. But I, I do, I'm, I'm not for putting it on Warner Avenue on, on the, on the frontage of six and, six and eight. That's just, that's me. Certainly talk.
I actually don't care about that either.
I'm just trying to protect the residences across the street.
Yep.
And I'm also thinking about the protection to the, the owner of the, well, the lease or of that property, his cars. This way here keeps people, people from going in there at night. And I know it's a quiet street. I also was there today, very quiet, short street, and I can see concerns. But, but again.
Madam Chair, so if we.
Wait, one second, because.
Oh, I thought he was done.
No, go ahead.
I, I would, I wouldn't, I mean, just to clarify, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take down the existing, the existing buffer, the existing landscaping. I, I don't think anybody proposing that, I don't think any of us want that. So I think when we're talking about the fence, we're talking about putting it behind it. So, so when the, the, the brush, the buffer, whatever we want to call it, is completely filled in, you basically won't see the fence from the, from Warner.
Right.
But when it does clear out, there will still be a fence. So I, I, I think that's what's being proposed here, and I would, I would be in support of that. Not, not the fence replacing the buffer. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I understand what you're saying.
Fence behind the buffer.
Yes.
So the point being, the, the fence could go inland, in, into the, the property itself.
Yes.
But outside of the parking area.
It's like behind that.
And it will still act as, as not only a visual buffer, but a sound barrier.
Right. Bernie?
Leave, leave the greenery.
Yep.
And still have the fence.
Nothing, my question was answered. I was going to ask, do you have to remove those trees in order to put in a fence?
No, it's not the intent.
That was my question.
The, the trees are so dense that if you put the fence up behind it, you're not going to see the fence anyway.
Okay. It is pretty dense.
Right.
So do you, please don't speak, thank you. Do you want to eliminate requiring the fence on six, along Warner Street?
That was my idea, but I'm one.
No, I. It's your decision. I'm just trying to guide you.
Are there residents across the street from that?
Yes, yes.
I would say no, leave it in.
I mean, it's especially low, low-lying shrubs and stuff, they, they don't last forever. So at some point, they may die down, and they will eventually grow back. But at least when that happens, you still have the fence providing the visual buffer.
I hate to belabor this, so we asked them about maintaining trees and the shrubbery. So now if we put the trees on the outside of the fence to block the trees, who's going to maintain the trees?
The landscaper.
But it's still their property. Still on your property.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they don't, they don't have an excuse that, oh, we can't see it from the inside of our property. That's not.
But is there, is there, where's the right-of-way and all that? You can't, I mean, I don't know where we're talking. There's a right-of-way, there's, there's property lines.
It would be, the fence would be in their property, so not.
So they'd have to go out?
So where are the, where's the trees now? Whose property are they on?
On that property.
It's on their property. So when, when they have.
Do we know that?
Yes.
When they have to do landscaping, they have to go around, well, especially when, well, no, either way, even if there's no fence, to do proper landscaping and trimming, they have to go around Warner and go onto Warner.
Yeah.
Prune. It sounds like they may not be doing that, but that's what they're supposed to.
So you want it to look nice.
Right.
It's going to be trees and a fence. It's got to look nice, too. You know, we're, they said they were going to maintain the trees, but, and now the gentleman that lives there is maintaining them, so.
Right.
Just as long as they're both, if both things can happen, that's good.
Yep.
But I'm just concerned, concerned about.
Right.
You know, blocking access to maintain the vegetation.
There's nothing that would stop them from going around.
That's fine, that's fine. It'll look nice, I mean.
I mean, we, we shouldn't need a condition of approval for that, because that's part of regular landscaping approval. It's that you have to maintain your landscaping.
Okay. All right, so John, what else did you have questions on?
So are, are we leaving condition four in as it is? Is that the consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The 35 buffer reduced, so that's staying in. And the final lighting plan shall show zero lighting onto adjacent properties or no increase, I think.
Was suggested.
Was suggested, no increase from what's there. And so condition seven would be no, no deliveries after 7:00 p.m. And condition eight would be with respect to the Enfield Street frontage, the applicant will provide a landscape bed to be reviewed and approved by staff. Is that?
Is that it?
Is that acceptable?
You need one that says no sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. On Warner.
No sidewalks on Warner?
Yeah. So that would be nine.
Is that a, is that a motion to waive that requirement and not a?
That's a waiver, isn't it?
It's not really a waiver. It's, it, it's kind of a.
We're approving it without sidewalks.
Situation, because it's a, it's a dead-end street. It was never required before when other houses and lots were created. So it's kind of one of those things. It's, it probably should have happened already, but it didn't. So, and they're not doing anything with that road whatsoever, so I think it's fair.
We'll leave that as, leave that out.
So no sidewalk is required along Warner Avenue.
So the other thing is, do we want to say zero lighting or with, or show no increase on lighting? That, that's not.
No increase is, is fair, I think.
Okay. All right.
And would you prefer that I read these out in, in full? Oh, you, you, you got them all.
You made it happy.
No, I got you a lot of them.
Here's a May Jones day.
But you'll have to do my work, too.
Okay.
So let me ask you this now. The motion to approve the waiver that's as written, that, that motion is, that's actually included in the, in your proposed new site-specific conditions. But I, I, I feel that something should be, that that should be, that waiver should be in. We should read the, that, that waiver in there for the.
Right, so right now it says approve the waiver per section 1020(c) to modify the 35-foot landscape buffer from business to residential to a 10-foot landscape buffer with, and I would just say with a solid six-foot-high vital fence, and take out the additional plantings. And from section 10.10.7b.i., which requires 15% of gross parking areas to be landscaped, the commission approves the waiver per B2, provided additional plantings are installed along the front yard landscape buffer along Enfield Street. Or we could just say additional plantings are installed along the front yard landscape buffer along 781?
Yep.
Along 781 frontage. 781 Enfield Street frontage. And in lieu of internal parking landscaping, the applicant can supplement the front planting strip with more bushes, flowers, and low-growing trees. Or it just, we could just say can supplement the front planting strip and just take out the rest. Does that work?
In, in lieu of internal parking landscaping, the applicant shall supplement? Okay. Oh, okay, so you're going to, yep. And that's 781 Enfield Street?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think, I think I got it. Okay, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the waiver per section 10.20(c) to modify the 35-foot landscape buffer from a business to residential to a 10-foot landscape buffer with a solid six-foot-high vinyl fence. And section 10.10.7.b.i. requires that 15% of the gross parking areas to be landscaped. The commission approves the waiver per section 10.10.7.b.i. provided additional plantings are installed along the front yard landscape buffer along 781 Enfield Street. In lieu of the internal parking landscaping, the applicant can supplement the front planting strip. And also.
Are you going to read?
No, that's, 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 that's just a waiver.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so second.
Roll call, please.
Looking for my sheet.
Take your time. A lot of paperwork here.
Okay, got it. Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Ken Halinski.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four. And now I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the expansion of an outdoor parking at 799, 781, 767 Enfield Street and 6 Warner Avenue for Gary Rome Kia of Enfield Map 29. Lots 47, 48, 53, 56, 77, and the BG and R33 zones with the following. There's 24 conditions listed along with proposed new, I believe, uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Lori went to sleep on him.
Lori went to sleep on me. I'm going to need your password.
Use your computer to be woken up.
Carl went to sleep, too.
I don't want your access code. I don't want your access code. That's all right, it's my fault. I should have kept. Thank you. And with the following additional. And with the following additional site-specific conditions as follows. Number one, on sheet six of 11, label all drainage pipes appropriately with size and slope. Number two, on detail sheet, label pavement depth as three inches rather than 1.25 inches. Three, modify the drainage report to have gravel surface considered impervious as likely that these surfaces may not, may one day be paved. Condition four, solid vinyl fencing to be installed around the perimeter with exception of along Enfield Street and Park Avenue. Condition number five, site-specific condition number five. The 35-foot buffer is reduced to 10-foot, however, must provide abreviated and other plantings along with fencing. Number six, final lighting plans shall show no increase onto adjacent properties. And an existing lighting plan shall be submitted to discover existing encroachments. Number seven, no deliveries after 7:00 PM. Number eight, continue the landscaping bed along sidewalk along the frontage of 781 Enfield Street. And number nine, no sidewalk is required along Warner Avenue.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Just a, a point of technical on the motion, the, the motion didn't include eight Warner Ave. I don't know, I don't know if that's intentional, I don't know if that's an unintentional omission. So eight Warner Ave is part of this application.
Right, it's part of.
But it's not included in the motion.
You're correct.
No, not.
So if you, if you want to add that, you can.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was reading all these new conditions. Yeah.
Lot of amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and also to modify the motion to also include eight, number eight Warner Avenue.
I second that as well.
Okay, roll call, please.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Frank Alimo.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Terrence Lynch.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Okay, so we're going to recess for about five minutes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Two, three, four, and five. Liquor permit establishments are only allowed by special permit in the four and five zone. But it's subject to a footnote. In that footnote, which is in section eight point one two, two point one, says only Class One and Class Three liquor permits, as defined in section eight, ten, two, shall be permitted. So there are five separate classes of permits under your regulations. So essentially, your regulations provide that. In the TD four and five, you're allowed to have two of the five permits, but not the other three. My client owns and operates a small grocery slash convenience store. So that's one of the, that's not one of the permitted liquor permit uses. He would like to have the opportunity to apply for a beer-only permit to sell beer out of his facility, but that's not permitted in this case. So we're asking for you to amend the regulations to allow him the opportunity to come before you and seek a special permit for the sale of beer at his establishment. Now, if you look at the, we go right to eight, ten, two, which sets forth the five different classes. The ones that would be permitted would be a hotel permit, a hotel permit for the sale of beer only, a restaurant permit, or a restaurant permit for the sale of wine and beer, or a restaurant permit for the sale of beer. So hotels and restaurants can sell alcohol, including beer and other beverages, in the TD four and five. And Class Three is a package store for the sale of all alcoholic beverages, and a drugist permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages. What we're after is actually Class Four, which oddly enough would allow three different types of permits, two of which are already covered in Class Three. But it would be a package store for the sale of beer only. So I don't know if a package store would want to sell beer only, but they could in, under a Class Four license. But you're already allowing package stores that can sell all kinds of alcohol in these zones, and the drugist permit as well. So the only thing, again, we're after is that little area in between, which is grocery stores for the sale of beer only. Now, to be honest with you, that's the only one my client really cares about. But when we talked to staff about it, they said, "Well, why don't you just try to eliminate the entire footnote so that all five classes of permits would be allowed in the TD four and five?" I'll leave that to you. Again, if you want to eliminate, you want to keep Class B and Class E permits from being acceptable in the TD four and five, I don't have a problem with it. We don't have a problem with it. But we do need Class Three or C to be included because, oh, I'm sorry, Four, because that would allow us, as a grocery store, convenience store, to sell alcohol. Now, I can tell you anecdotally that the Gray's Club had the same sort of problem last year, and I think it was '04. And we went a different route with, for them, and we were able to get two variances from the ZBA to allow them to ignore this section of the regulation. In the first case, it was Molina's Plaza. That did not occur, so the Gray's Club gave up their variance for Molina's and then ended up on Pearl Street. So there's a variance there. So if you, now, club permits are allowed under Class Five licenses. So they are, they do have a variance. If you were to take the footnote and entirely remove it from the regulations, then the Gray's Club would then be operating under conforming regulations as opposed to a variance. But that's entirely up to you. They got what they needed to open their club. So if you have a problem with eliminating the footnote, then I'd be happy to modify our request so that the footnote would read only Class One and Class Three and Class Four liquor permits are permitted in the TD Five. But I'll leave that to you. So if there's an appetite to do one or the other, that's great. If there's an appetite to do neither, then, you know, my client's not going to get what they are trying to do. But seems to me that the, these regulations were drafted to increase opportunity, economic opportunity, in these, all of these zones. And I think one way to do that would probably be allow the, and we're not, you're not going to get a big grocery store down there, so it's going to be the, the local guys, like Corona's Market. And I don't even know if Corona's is in one of the, they're in a TD, I don't know, four or five, but...
That is one of the grocery stores that would be affected.
Yeah. But I can't imagine there being too many more over there. But simply stated, that's, that's what we're asking for, and we think it would be consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you have.
Staff?
Good evening, Commissioners. So I did write a memo for this application, and I'm going to start on the backside of it. Just a quick history of the area that this would affect. Thompsonville is our downtown community, which thrives on mixed uses and interactions between residential uses and commercial uses. Class Four is required for grocery stores, which is not currently allowed in Thompsonville per the zoning regulations currently for TD four and five. Class Two is required for any taverns and/or cafes. Admitting this footnote, which restricts the liquor classes currently, would allow new and existing businesses to apply for a liquor permit if they wish to do so. This opens the door for taverns and cafes, grocery stores, and private slash public clubs in the TD four and five zones. This would not be applicable for TD one, two, and three, which are known for their residential and walkable neighborhoods. So an argument could be made that this would be in consistency with your P O C D for promoting certain aspects of economic viability of specific businesses in Thompsonville. This would still be required under a special permit application, so the businesses would still come before you. You're not losing your power there in terms of regulating the uses. This just opens the door for more opportunities for existing businesses, especially considering all the change Thompsonville is about to inherit for our train station and our upcoming DEPRAT presentation of Town Council on the 17th. So that's why we thought it would be a better proposal for this applicant, to just eliminate the footnote in its entirety, should you agree. If not, the applicant has stated he'd be able to modify two specific liquor classes if you don't want to admit it entirely. The only other thing was, we did get CROG referral back, and they had no conflicts or comments about the proposed amendment. And the effective date, should you approve tonight, would be March 31, 2025. That's all I have.
Walter? Vinnie?
I'm all set.
Joe?
How's that?
Frank?
I'd say admit it, let the footnote take it out.
Terrence?
All set.
Ken?
I'm good with it.
John?
Preston?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it, too. So I will entertain a motion to close public hearing, since there's nobody in our audience.
My move, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing we don't have anybody in our audience, I will entertain a motion.
Yes. Quick question first, staff, through the chair. Just the published newspaper date is?
March 31, 2025. This will be published on, I believe we do on Saturday. So March 31 is after the publication of the legal action appeal period.
Right, because it's asking the effective date, publishing newspaper date.
March 31 is the date. So the amendment shall be effective on March 31. You don't have to read the part that says publish in newspaper on date, that's just for us.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3118ZA, application for text amendment to omit footnote one under section eight point one twenty-two point one, notes to table eight point one twenty-two, in the Thompsonville District's 12 Alden Avenue LLC applicant, Carl Landalino, representative, with the findings that, in adopting this regulation, the Commission has considered the Plan of Conservation and Development, or the P O C D, and finds the amendment to be consistent with the P O C D. And the amendment shall be an effective date of March 31, 2025.
Second.
Roll call, please. Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Kenneth Talinsky?
Four.
Vincent Grillo?
Four.
Joseph Muley?
Four.
Terrence Lynch?
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
That was easy. Thank you.
Yeah, we should have moved Carl up.
Sorry.
I know, sorry.
He gets paid by the hour.
Okay. We don't have any old business or new business. Commissioner's correspondence. I do have some exciting news about Thompsonville. The Black Crow Coffee Cafe is opening tomorrow. The ribbon cutting is at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. So if you've got nothing better to do at eight o'clock in the morning, come on down. It's at nine North Main Street.
You can open at 6:30 so we can do it before work.
Well, you could, I think they open at six, but, okay. But if you haven't had a chance to just drive around downtown, down in Thompsonville, which I did on Tuesday, I am extremely happy what I'm seeing happening down here. There is a lot of properties being renovated. There's lots of little restaurants. If you haven't had the opportunity to try any of them, and Laurie, what's the name of that restaurant?
We call Puerto Two.
It's delicious. The food is absolutely delicious. It's Puerto Rican food, and if you ever tried Puerto Rican food, you'll love this place. So I am putting that plug in for Thompsonville. It is coming, so.
It's happening.
It's happening. So, yeah, I was really excited about what I saw. Okay, anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Yeah, so I don't know if anybody else was able to attend Don Poland's presentation to the CROG Regional Planning Committee. I did attend. It was a great presentation. I don't know if, if you guys got forwarded the materials. Staff probably has it, I have it as well. I can forward it if you guys haven't got it.
That would be good.
I don't think it was a recording, but we at least have slides. There's definitely slides they sent out.
I think that CROG said that it was going to, I'm sorry, that the RPC said that it was going to record it and that we'd be able to get it afterwards. I just, I haven't had a chance to look, quite honestly.
They sent out the slides, for sure. And I can at least, I'll forward you guys the slides.
That would be great, thank you.
But if you just, guys, just, I'll just do a quick, like, minute overview of what he talked about. He talked about kind of traditionally planning commissions plan for what they want to see, but didn't pay as much attention to what's possible. So he stressed the importance of staying aware of market conditions and costs, especially to understand viability of developments that you want to see, so maintain feasibility. And a good example he gave was markets have shifted from retail and commercial dictating, being dictated by where people lived, to flipping on its head. So now housing is being dictated where retail and commercial are, which we've talked about, you know, adding housing to business zones. So that's great. I think we're staying up with that. And he shared a quote, which I thought was really interesting. I don't have the exact quote, but it's from his partner, Mike Goman, and it was something like, "The problem is not that retail is overbuilt, it's that it's under demolished." I thought that was really interesting, you know, point of view. Nothing's permanent, you know, whether it's bladed or it's just underused, and obviously we have the mall here. You know, there's obviously a lot of retail in the mall, but it's just not the right type. So, you know, it's a great, great presentation, and take a look at the slides, at the very least. It's a good, good overview.
Great.
And I'm going to ask a question of staff, but they may address it in their, in their report. I'll ask again, like my monthly question about the parking ride, if there's any status updates with the state and with any partnerships.
Not that I know of. I haven't heard anything.
Oh, man.
We will let you know.
We're kind of counting down.
That's an important thing.
We're kind of counting down the months now, as they, they just got their, their big grant, so.
Well, that, it really is a big thing, because the other day, I used the mall to, as a cut through. And there's a lot of cars parked there that take the bus, people that take the bus, so it's huge.
There's even, even some cyclists that, you know.
Yeah, well, and I looked for your bicycle.
I take it on, I take it on the bus, actually. So you won't, you won't see my bicycle.
Because I was worried about it. You know I get worried about things.
A lot of people, a lot, a lot of people do walk to and from the, the bus stop as well, so the cars are not the only indicator.
Actually, there is an update to that. None of the other malls are interested.
The town's got to step up, maybe.
In putting the parking ride there. So we, in the state, are continuing the quest.
Maybe this parking lot here, at least as a temporary thing. It's in the center of town.
This lot's never full. I've never seen it more than 20% full.
Yeah.
So it's something to think about. We don't want to lose the, the, I mean, and I do have a personal stake in it, of course. I do, I do commute by bus, but trust me, there's a lot more people than just me, so it would be, it would be a serious loss for, for the community. And, and there's folks that, as well, drive from Massachusetts, too, that depend on that, so there's a lot of people.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Director of Planning report.
Do you want to do Commissioner's correspondence?
Oh, yeah, oh, oh, well, no, I'll let you do it. I'll let you do it. I'm excited about it.
Commissioner's correspondence at all?
Absolutely.
We just did that.
No, anything else?
No, other than the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment thing and the, whatever that other thing is, that economic development is, I can't remember the name, the...
Right, all right. So, I'll talk as I pass this out. So, Monday night, March 17, at 6:30, the DEPRAT team will be giving a presentation on their final idea book. And we've read through it, it's like 120 pages, and it's fabulous. I think you're going to really enjoy what they came up with.
I've read it four times. What?
Why?
It's a first read?
It's actually a compilation of all the previous T-Ville Revite Development stuff. Better. And they just got new graphics, and it makes it pretty.
I'm going to read it 10 more times. So, and then, in addition to what is happening on Monday night at Town Council, at, so the, the presentation is at 6:30, and the, the joining of the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority, otherwise known as MURDA, and we did not make that up. So this is a program that is designed, you have to actually sign up for, to become a member of it, and it will help with funding in the future for, for transit-oriented development, economic development, and also housing. They are promoting a targeted growth area as a solution to some housing. So we believe that, we as staff, believe that this could be very useful in the future. The funding isn't, like, right available right now, but they're just starting to take in the applications. And they've asked the PCC if you'd like to attend and speak on this. This is what I've, I've given you tonight, and I suggested that perhaps you could take a vote on one way or the other, and Linda could perhaps read this into the record on Monday night.
So I, and Laurie and I did get a chance to talk to Don Poland on Friday, because I had some concerns. And Don said, "This is a brand-new board or commission," or whatever they're calling themselves, "authority." It's quasi-government. They currently are supposed to have, their first round is $90 million. They're offering it out to 161 towns in Connecticut that have transit-oriented districts. So even though it's 90 million, it doesn't necessarily mean Enfield gets the whole 90, which I think it should. I'm sorry. You know, but now they're already applied, you know, how dare they? And they probably want theirs. No, it's all about us. But it's an opportunity for the council. They did talk about that they would have some ideas on the zoning in the area, but then I remembered that any kind of zoning changes or text changes are public hearings. So they have to come before us. We have a public hearing. It's not a done deal just because they think, you know, we should have yellow buildings, and we really don't want yellow. We want green ones, so we don't have to listen to them. So it's just an opportunity, and it's a brand-new thing that the state has started. They do get funding outside of the state, you know, they get it from private concerns, so I think it's an opportunity. And I just want to make sure that, because I'm only one person, I, I want to make sure you guys are all okay with it. So that's why I sent out the information about the whole thing that they had about it. So if you read it, great. So, so how do you guys feel?
Walter?
Good? Vinnie? Joe? Frank?
Do we have to put this on the agenda and vote as a commission?
No, it's just a...
But I'm confused on the bottom in summary.
Oh, I just wanted, it was just a consensus vote. It wasn't, like, if you're against it, that's fine.
No, 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 I didn't know if we had to put it on another agenda to make it official.
No, no, this is, it's not before us. It's before the Town Council. But I didn't want to just go out and say, "Well, we want this," if you guys didn't feel that this was applicable, so.
Yeah, we get a consensus, and I think what you want to do Monday is go before the, speak before the council and say that we, as the P and Z, are in support of this.
Are supporting it, so.
We're good.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanted, that's, that's all, because, like I said, I'm only one, I'm only one vote. I can't talk for everybody.
Chance to get some money.
Hey, yeah.
We're in line tonight.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Laurie? You're on.
I'm on. Where am I? Let's see. So we did, we talked about the DEPRAT, we talked about the MURDA.
Yep. Do you want to talk about the workshops?
The workshop is next, I didn't bring that with me, but it's next.
It's next Thursday.
Thursday.
Which I won't be able to attend, so.
So, yeah. So we'll get the workshop agenda out to you tomorrow. We sent it to Don just for a final okay, but we're going to be looking at outdoor...
Storage.
Storage, and I think chapter 10.
Yeah, it's chapter 10, outdoor storage, and that was the one that got canceled because of the ice storm.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, and then I also wanted to let you know that we did...
Oh, no, no.
No, that's in two weeks.
No, no, that's in two weeks.
Don't be confusing me, John.
As a reminder of that, those that signed up for that, you should have received your books tonight.
Yep.
On the table. We can't add any more people anymore, and we're out of money anyway, so, so, and we did, just for everybody to know, is we canceled our March 27 meeting and made a special meeting on March 26.
Right.
So those of you that want to attend can, or that are attending will be able to.
So this book is for...
That's, that's for the Saturday workshop.
For Saturday workshop.
It's updated case law.
Next Saturday, not this Saturday, the, right.
Yeah.
And that's a Zoom?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. I did want to let you know that we have discussed this new S D E regulation. I've got the existing and the proposed, as we discussed it with Don. We did submit it as a text amendment. I've already met with representatives of development of Mass Mutual and the mall, and they're very in favor of us. They thought it was a really good text amendment. And I just wanted to give it out to you guys again. And I, I probably should be speaking into the microphone. So, so, well, so we think it's a really great and, and very variable regulation, but you will still have a lot of strength as a commission, even though it's, it's a special development district and overlay, and, and will allow uses that would not normally be allowed. So I think that's it. Do you have anything, George?
Administrative approvals?
Oh, yeah, for, okay.
Did you guys receive a memo in your packet?
For what?
The admin? No?
Here, I'll pass it out while you talk.
Okay.
Okay.
So, this is an approval for 215 Moody Road. It is to add a addition of a driveway extension located on the west side of the building, which is about 1,535 square feet of additional impervious area, and the addition of a new overhead door also on the west side of the building. These are for a new tenant called Arabon Composites, who need the space to be able to haul in their products for air space manufacturing. The property is currently over. It's allowed impervious coverage. It's at about 67.1%. So as part of this application, the property owner has agreed to remove, agreed to remove all the exterior cement pads in the northeast portion of the building, which would amount to 1,550 square feet of impervious area to compensate for the new driveway. There are recommended conditions of this admin approval, that a rent and agreement from the property owner should be obtained, noting the removal of the existing cement pad as part of the construction process, and before a certificate of zoning compliance is issued, and that the site plan should be reviewed by the engineering department for any E and S control bonds that may be required for this project. Presently, the property owner has rented out office space to about 28 personal service providers, which weren't allowed to operate in the I-1 zone. They weren't approved for the zoning permit process. The property owners were issued a cease and desist order to be notified of the non-conforming allowed uses before a zoning permit approval for Arabon Composites operates from this property. All non-approved, non-allowed businesses should be vacated from the property. We did get an email today from the property owners notifying us that all illegal tenants have been relocated and are now out of the building. A site inspection for this will be performed, performed on Friday by the zoning officer, and once that has been verified on Friday, Arabon is free to submit for their zoning permit. So the admin approval helps their new tenant be able to operate at this site. They need the door for autoclaves for their product to help haul it into the building and out.
Okay. Any questions?
What building is this, 215 Moody Road? What, which building?
It's the, the main building there, the one of all the spaces. It used to be a warehouse, had offices in the top floor.
Hallmark.
We're home.
Hallmark?
It's not Hallmark.
Not Hallmark.
Olympic Sales?
Yeah, I think that's, is that Olympic Sales? Well, then we don't know.
I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, the, that's the old Olympic Sales.
Okay.
Bricks not here to represent.
That's on the corner of Sobolski Road, and, yeah, I got it.
All right.
You got it?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any concerns, anyone? No? All right. Okay, that looks good. Yes, I see.
So that would be the text amendment that I just handed out to you, an application for a text amendment to change section five, section zero, such a requirement to the special development district, kind of then field out to get S D E, so that it's F C A 25 that includes.
Okay, and then 45 and 53 South Road? That's an SPR?
Yep, that's just being received, just for a modification of the approved site plan, just some property line changes, and it doesn't really affect the overall development, just the property itself in general.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
10:28 PM.